Here.
Cribs.
Here.
Laird.
Here.
Monta Mayor.
Here.
Roberson.
Here.
Sparhawk.
Here.
Mayor.
Here.
We have a call.
Thank you. First item on the agenda is the consent agenda, which consists of approval of minutes from our regular meeting on September ninth, as well as local licensing, liquor licensing authority items for Carbondale Historical Society's special event permit and an English in Action special event permit, as well as Jalisco Grill liquor license renewal and Cripple Creek Backcountry renewal. Also consists of, excuse me, accounts payable, Chaco's Park updated site plan, which we discussed last time, and the town hall roofing contract. Any items to pull for discussion? Or any questions?
Guess the roofing contract's a little bit interesting to me.
Do you want to pull that for discussion?
Yeah.
Okay, so we'll pull the roofing contract for discussion. Any questions about any of the other items? Nurtained motion.
Move to approve the consent agenda, pulling the roofing contract.
One second.
Motion by Erica, second by Jess. All in favor, say aye.
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 Okay, motion passes unanimously. Chris, what questions did you have about the roofing contract?
Yeah, just, just whether it was, I guess, it did seem a little bit concerning just considering that we did seem to have a plan unfolding for a little bit more of a measured approach to this project. And this, I don't know, I guess I just would like some clarification if this is, to what degree does this require redoing essentially if you want to do anything else? And then I guess also, if we're not doing that, do we have a, we laying out a strategy for how else we're going to solarize? Bad solar, I think, because I think the canopy plan could be, could be an alternate option, but I guess I just, yeah. I don't know if that's ever.
Kevin, you want to enlighten us a little bit on this? I thought the memo was pretty thorough, but I think good to talk about it a little bit.
So, you know, the, the original thought was that we'd try to combine the electrification project with this project. There was a delay in getting that electrification grant squared away. In the meantime, our insurer, who is paying for the roof, was very anxious for us to get the roof done. So we were kind of in this battle and it became apparent to both Aaron and I earlier this summer that there was just no way we were going to get the electrification project to a point where we could get it coordinated with this in a timeframe that would still get a new roof on before winter. And that's really what we were getting pushed towards. So there, there will be, you know, when we electrify, it'll change some of the stands and, and whatnot that are up there, but we can work those costs into the, the installation of that equipment. And I don't think it's going to be a huge deal.
Okay.
Did that answer your question?
Yeah, yeah, I just wanted to make sure we weren't creating a headache for ourselves down the road if we wanted to, yeah, make that project as smooth as possible, so.
Quite honestly, I think we're potentially avoiding a little bit of a headache because doing this first and doing the mechanical later, they're not the same contractor that would do it and trying to get, trying for us to manage that coordination that's necessary probably would have been a little difficult, in my opinion.
Okay. I guess I just, though, and that I feel that there is a grant on the table and it is sort of incumbent on us to complete our end of the deal on that. And I think as part of the public works discussion, we should obviously come back to this, but it seems like we should try to execute that at some point in the near future.
You mean the public building electrification grant is paying for electrification?
Yeah, I don't know what the expiration is on that, but it seems like it was already a year ago that it came through.
It, it actually was executed in July.
Okay.
And the expiration date on it is, I want to say at least five years, if not six years from now. And our intent is to get that done next year.
Great. Well, yeah, I just mainly wanted to make sure we're, I didn't realize that the grant itself was taking so long to get processed essentially, but thanks for all the clarification.
Yeah.
With that, we can make a motion to approve that item.
I'd move to approve and authorize the mayor to sign the construction agreement with Ajax Roofing Company LLC.
Second.
Motion by Erica, second by Chris. All in favor, say aye.
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 Okay, motion passes unanimously. Great, thank you, Kevin. Next item on the agenda is public comment. If anybody here from the public who would like to speak on an item that doesn't have a public comment period or that you're not already involved in on the agenda later, just anything on your mind? You can approach the podium and, Kevin doesn't have a public comment? Yeah, so just tell us your name and where you live. Carbondale sign if you live in Carbondale or elsewhere, if you live elsewhere. And you have about three minutes, please address your comments to me.
I know. Bree, that's what I go by. 1179 Highway 13, lot four. Tried to do all this a while back. And y'all might not have all been here at that time, but I really did try to work it out because it's kind of embarrassing. And you had your fake insurance investigator try to help me. That was a lie. Because I heard from her, then didn't. And on October 20th, October 31st, sorry, of 2020, I was raped by my roommate and I reported it to the cops and they did nothing. They arrested my roommate and I go to work, come back, he's there the next day. So there was no TRO, temporary restraining order. And number one reason they don't report is because, I mean, we don't report, is because you fear retaliation. Number two, cops won't do anything. Then the embarrassment. Well, I think it's all been covered here. And now I'm unfortunately I'm just letting you all know I'm suing for $2.3 million and $23 million in punitive damages against them specifically. Because there is no statute of limitations for rape. And I know what he did, I found out later what he did prior to him moving in, even though I did three different background checks, nothing showed up. Found out he's a convicted felon. Found out that he had hurt and raped other, you know, women. Found out he hurt and raped somebody actually in the place I was living where I was the only person on the lease. Beat him up, raped him after septine him, then using my car as I slept because I had to get up for work to transport him and dump him along 133. And he ended up in the hospital. And the cops say, oh, we did investigation. Well, I don't have the resources they have. How in the world did I find this out? And they couldn't. Kind of problematic when you think about it. I did reach out to both the town council and the police chief to no avail. And it's been really difficult for me to talk about this because it is embarrassing.
Okay, thank you for your comment.
Everybody's going to know now.
Okay, thank you. Anyone else who would like to make a comment to the board? Is there anybody online, Patrick? Okay. Moving on to trustee comments. Any trustees have comments since our last meeting?
Well, I met with the Third Street Center. We did our, I guess, quarterly meeting and everything's going great with Third Street Center as always, filled. Just, there was a change in vac, in tenants, the longtime Aspen Santa Fe, they're going to be moving out of the Third Street Center only because Paco's retiring from the Flo Corrico and he's been here a long time. But now I think Dash, Dance Initiative will go in, in that, in the place of, of him, so that's good. And the dance center looks really great and we have the business confluence in that, in the community room, which was also really a good event. And, you know, the chamber always is a really good planning with that event. And yeah, that's what I have is the Third Street Center. And then just a reminder of the grants for the nonprofit. I think they have a couple of weeks to put the request in for that.
Great, thanks Christina. Just to make sure we go around, Jess, anything?
Yeah, I went to the GCE meeting on Friday, the board meeting. It was mostly about the Impact Accelerator Grant that I think we'll talk about at some point, either tonight or at a future meeting. And budgets, obviously with the news from Garfield County, they're looking for more funding from the other jurisdiction, the member jurisdictions, which we will also hear a presentation from them on the 21st of October, so we can talk about that then. They're doing great work as usual with less and less funding. And then I also attended the Chamber Confluence. It was a great event, well-attended, with a good panel. And then I just wanted to request that in the future, if there's, I was just disappointed that the pool update that happened at our last regular meeting, the memo basically said like everything will be contained in the contingency, but didn't actually mention that there's going to be additional costs from the owner's rep and the design team. And I think that when, I would hope that when a consultant comes to us with news of a delay, even if they think they can keep it contained in the contingency, it would be helpful to have an estimate of the added costs at that time. To not know what those added costs are at this point is disappointing. So I just wish that they would provide more information at the time of a bomb dropping like we're delayed until May. And it makes me nervous that we're, that their completion date is May 22nd, when that's like Memorial Day weekend. It's like opening weekend. So it just is frustrating that they didn't come to us before it was like a month before they were, they were scheduled to be done. It just wasn't very much notice with not a lot of information moving forward. So just wanted to put that on the record. And I think that's all I have. Thanks.
Thanks, Jess. You're good?
Actually, I'll chime in on one thing. I'm looking forward to seeing the comments that we get from our, what is it, tactical urbanism? Cause I was walking on Hendrix the other day and somebody biked by and they were like, Erica, I love these. I love all of them. Keep all of them. And so I yelled back, make sure you submit that in a public comment format, because, but just a reminder that there's a lot of people who, even if we get some complaints, there's a lot of people who are really enjoying them. And so I'm looking forward to seeing what kind of comments are getting submitted and, yeah, moving forward with that stuff.
Great, thanks, Colin.
If, Ryan, if you could follow up and get us some background on what we just heard, yeah, that'd be really helpful. Just to top that on First Friday, October 3rd at Third Street Center, doors open at 6:30 and event is at 7:30, rally, the valley for the mall, mobile home park purchase, if people would like to show up. We're showing a film about mobile home parks and how they're being bought up by private equity firms. It's really good. Had an event last night at Takah and October 3rd is at Third Street Center. The closing is heading towards October 14th, so moving in a good direction. I just wanted to echo what Jess said, and if there's any way, I know we talked, if there's an increase, I know it's not an increase in budgets and in contingency, but it'd be great to know what the costs are. I mean, I don't know that we have a lot of choices, but it'd just be good to know. That's all I have.
Thanks, Colin. Ross?
I'm all good.
Chris?
Just mainly had my nose in Katie and Kay all two weeks, but thank you, just mainly a huge thank you to a lot of, lot of, lot, lot of people who've come out to support us. And I think we're close to 70% of the way there. So it's on halfway through. So I think we're feeling good. And there's all kinds of events going on around that. There's, we'll be at the farmer's market tomorrow. We'll be doing bingo at Beer Works tomorrow night. We'll be at Basalt Mountain Heart on Friday night. We'll be at Basalt Sunday Market on Sunday. And we're having a, further out, we're having an event with Kirk Seigler, who's a NPR reporter, which will be at the Crystal Theater in conversation with Amy Haddon Marsh, our sort of lead reporter or our stringer reporter at the moment, but longtime reporter. And that I believe is Thursday, the 9th or something of October. So keep, anyway, it'll be in the paper. 6th to me, anyway. So thank you to everyone who's donated. And if you haven't, the station, we've got all kinds of swag, so, bye.
Right, thanks, Chris. I would echo the comments about the Chamber Confluence event and look forward to our discussion with Andrea and as well as with everybody from Carbondale Arts and Creative District tonight. That was a great event last Wednesday. And then I attended the Stepping Stones fundraiser on Friday night. And just a reminder of what an incredible resource that is for the youth of this town and that it's a standalone, unique operation that, that doesn't exist anywhere else. It's not part of some big national network or anything. And it was great to see people come out and support of that. That's all I have. So moving on to attorney's comments. Mark?
Nothing, thank you.
Great, thanks. Ryan, manager's comments?
Nothing for this evening.
Okay. Then we're right into the action items, a little bit ahead of schedule. First up is Carbondale Arts and Chamber of Commerce Economic Development Update. So Jamie, Michael, Andrea, Kate, I don't know if you're here with this group or something else, but.
Is there a comment section in this or did I, is this just a?
I mean, this, there's not really a public comment section, but I think if you want to share something, it's a pretty informal presentation.
If I just go first really quick, I should have done it in public.
Okay, that's fine.
It's not really, it's like overarching.
Okay, sure.
Kate Giannetti, 282 North 7th Street. And I just want to check in. I think I stand here as somebody who really cares about Carbondale. And through the painted pig, I was able to experience what First Friday and what these organizations do. And it's really powerful. It's the energy and community that is like the best of, of Carbondale in, in that moment. The hard thing is outside of those big events and the energy that goes into it, the HCC in Main Street is struggling. And I think we just find ourselves in a pivotal moment of some big projects, you know, two hotels, downtown north, the, the Town Center project. And I think we just need to be real about some of the challenges small businesses facing. Doing business in Carbondale is extremely hard. And with permits taking longer and the pressure on updating code on small business, I think it's becoming challenging to just find a footing and establish in Carbondale. And that's hard to see. And I think we see the shutterings on Main Street as examples of that. This isn't an issue about just tourism and what that's going to bring. I think it's a, a bigger, complex issue about mixed-use development, how we build economic engines outside of just becoming a bedroom community for Aspen. Like, what are things outside of tourism that we can bring to Carbondale? So I've just heard a lot of conversation around how we do this. So I'm standing here in a very positive way, looking towards a future in Carbondale that I think we can do and pull off together. But it's going to take, I think, a look at how our permitting process is going right now and how we support small business. And how we not only highlight and support what the Chamber and Carbondale Arts is doing, but create new collaboration coal, coalitions that really speak to the village life and community gathering. So, yeah, I just, I, I think there's a lot of energy out there that is hard to hear from being a small business and entrepreneur. And I don't think that's what Carbondale wants to be known for. We need to find a way forward that bridges that gap between a modern government, but also like a scrappy startup town that, that can grow into itself. So that's all I got.
Great, thanks, Kevin.
Thank you. Yeah, see you guys.
Okay, we'll hand it off to you all and however you want to proceed.
Thank you. I'm Michael South from Carbondale Arts.
I'm Jamie Abbott from Carbondale Arts also.
And I am Andrea Stewart from Carbondale Chamber.
I think it is. Green is on for those. Green is good.
What about no light?
I think I see green on both of yours from you. That's your go-to.
Great, well, thank you for having us back. This is the second time we get a chance to sit in front of you this year. In the spring, we kind of gave you a lot of kind of highlights and review of the previous year. I think we'll keep that to a minimum tonight and, and favor of just having a quick update, a look at kind of some of the things we've done so far this year and a conversation about what we've heard from the community and the needs and how we plan to move forward. I'll touch on this quickly and Andrea, if you want to take it from there, feel free. But as we all know, the Carbondale Arts Chamber and Tourism, the Creative District have been working in close partnership with the town. That has been the economic kind of development for us. And we are really appreciative of the support and the stewardship and the trust that we've been given to, to do that work. We're looking to kind of amplify that, strengthen that, and make sure that each of those partners are kind of all rolling in the same direction and, and in closer alignment moving into the future.
I just want to add something to Kate's point maybe, which is that I think both the, I can only speak for Carbondale Arts for sure, but I think I can, Andrea would agree that our organizations really intentionally solicit and implement feedback that we hear from the community and from our constituents. Our constituents are a little bit different. There's plenty of overlap. And we're aware, we're not the only people who can speak to economic development needs in this town. There's plenty of room at the table. We're just showing up and doing our best within our own mission-driven organizations and staying true to our own missions. And just want to sort of offer that as a bit of humility to, in the conversation, but also as an open invitation that we, we, we love, I mean, we're looking for more participation.
Thanks, Jamie. All right. And with that, we will just dive in. So just again, a really brief recap in regards to Carbondale Chamber and Tourism. We are 480-plus members strong, which is the strongest we've been since I've joined the Chamber in 2008. So we're really proud of this. We have a 92% retention rate. And we did get recognized by the Colorado Chamber for winning that award for highest member retention in 2023. Just wanted to point out a couple of things really quickly about our membership. 78% of our members are at the base camp tier, which is self-selected, but oftentimes that is for one to 10 employees. Also, just really quickly to highlight some of our top benefits. Definitely credibility as a Carbondale Chamber member. We have a lot of affiliate programs. One of our more popular programs would be the Chamber Ski Pass Discount. We offer that with Aspen Skiing Company as well as Sunlight Mountain Resort. Over 50% of our members are taking advantage of that. Also, our e-communications are the best way for our members to communicate messages out to the membership and also some of our educational events. So with that, we have a 52% open rate and performing high above industry standard, which is great. We have a member directory listing on our website, keeping true to Carbondale and our values of staying green. We do not do a printed directory or magazine of any type. And then we also have various networking opportunities such as business after hours. Our most recent one was last week. We had, I believe, 63 attendees. And the next one, if I can give a plug, will be at Carbondale Arts in October. So there's that. And then continuing on with our Chamber advocacy, education and outreach. So we do a lot of support, engagement and education with our members. Most recently, the Business Confluence, which was last week. So thank you to everyone in this room. It was great to have such a great representation through sponsorship and speakers and presenters and also hosted at the Third Street Center. So thank you very much. Business Sector Roundtable, so this is a great opportunity. This is a new program that we implemented this year. We had one regarding retail and then hope to continue another one in this last quarter. And just a great opportunity to have like-minded businesses sitting around the table talking about any strengths or struggles that they're seeing in their business. We also have an upcoming Education Power Hour that will be end of October, I believe, regarding SEO and AI. I'm very interested. We also really work in regards to leadership and coordination. We partner with the town on the revolving loan fund. Our shop local Chamber gives certificates. We average about $10,000 per year and those dollars go right back into our community. And then of course, strategic partnerships run. One recent example would be Mountain Fair and the Chamber partnering with them to provide additional seating in the Oasis area. So with that, turn it back over to you.
So we talked about before, the Creative District is a state program that's run through the Office of Economic Development. A lot of that has to do with the value of investing in places and what that does for communities and the economic development. This is just a kind of quick overview. I think we're really well-known for the events that we put on. And of course, it has economic impact. And we'll focus on a little bit more of that in a second, but there's really multiple strategies that we look at when we're talking about this. Some of that is entrepreneurial opportunities. That's making sure that people have a chance to try out a product in a market space, whether that's Mountain Fair, Deck the Walls, many other just kind of.
um, many other just kind of educational opportunities as well. Some of that is in direct investment into the landscape in terms of parks and public art. The of Carbondale being a creative place and making sure that um, kind of we're upholding those values of it. I think Kate referred to it as kind of being grassroots, um, and having that like really community-centric ethos. So tho- there's multiple strategies uh, within that where our mission is to build community through the arts. And so that that community development piece, the civic engagement that goes around that is really critical, and um, I think First Fridays is a really great example of how that just happens organically when you bring people into a space and and center that around creativity and the arts. This is a quick breakdown of what we kind of um, think of as our spending and um, income related to economic development. Um, it's, you know, less than ten percent of our overall budget, but we're kind of putting the force of the organization behind it in a lot of other ways. Um, you guys have been a huge supporter of that, but we're also using that funding and leveraging other sources such as the city of Aspen, the state of Colorado, um, and private contributions as well. Did you want to speak?
I'll just add to that and saying, I mean, again, to echo Kate's comment about it being kind of grassroots. Um, Carbondale Arts is by its nature and its origin, pretty scrappy. Um, it's created by the community for the community, and um, I think that we have a long track record of just making do with what we've got and bringing whoever we can to the table to do um, good stuff, but I think that there's also in looking at this budget, a really open call out and question, like if there's things you want to see done and there's things, we're we're taking in that feedback, and I think we do have a long track record of returning on that investment.
So just briefly, we'll talk a little bit about First Friday. This is one of the main places that we've focused a lot of investment over the past year uh, with your help. Some of that has been pop-up placemaking. These are the things that, you know, similar to tactical urbanism, where it's like, let's put some temporary things in place and see if they work, see what happens. We invested in these kind of bistro tables and chairs just to make sure that we were activating the street. Part of the conversation we had back with the Special Event Task Force, um, at the end of last year, beginning of this year, was around that street closure and making sure that if we were to close the street, that it was activated, right? Because there had been some issues with the street not being, people not being in the street and um, some traffic issues. So we wanted to make sure that if we were going to do that street closure, we were justifying it. This was one of those investments that we looked at. Um, in addition to making sure that there were a lot more community partners involved, Katie and Kay has been out there almost every First Friday playing music down the street. Voices has been out there. We've um, invited a number of buskers, just musicians to come and play their music. Breakdancers, performers of all kinds, still walkers. So we're really just making sure that the community has opportunities to present their work and their organizational um, offerings in that space. So that's really been part of that street closure management. Um, it wouldn't have been possible without hiring some additional help. We've had a First Friday liaison who's been key in coordinating not just with those additional acts, um, but also with the town. So um, that is a an expense for us that we think has been worthwhile, and then we've done some additional marketing. You can see in these pictures, the blue blocks, the other piece is the volunteers that we've uh, used for that street closure as part of that kind of partnership with the town. We've made sure that it's not town staff that's out there getting paid overtime, but we're bringing people from the community volunteering. And if that, uh, if you can see, we've made sure that they're enjoying themselves. If you've been out there, you've seen them dancing, you've seen them in their um, fringed safety vests and all that. So um, again, being scrappy, being grassroots, making sure that we're talking about uh, the community doing things for the community uh, of and by and for the community. The other thing is there is the food trucks, and these haven't been without some um, tension or uh, conflict, but we think that there's some real value in it, and some of the survey results that we'll look at later kind of show that the community, I think, agrees. This is just a real quick um, look at some of the numbers. Uh, when we talk about economic impact, sometimes we talk about direct, indirect and induced impact. That direct impact being kind of the the initial spend that's made. So if um, somebody comes and purchases something from Carbondale Arts or a vendor, that's kind of that direct impact. We also are looking at visitor spend, and this is kind of that that secondary or indirect impact. And we, um, from the data know that the average day visitor is spending ninety-six dollars. And so we've kind of looked at those event totals through the placer data that we have, looked at that total visitation, kind of arrived at this number for that total impact. And then the next slide kind of shows what that return looks like. So if that total economic impact is just over six million, the town sales colla- sales tax collected, it's two hundred thousand. With the thirty thousand dollar investment that you've given us, we've uh, you know, offered a return on that investment of uh, close to a hundred and eighty thousand dollars. And these are estimates, you know, it's not a perfect science, but we think to Jamie's point that 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 return on the scrappiness that we're doing with these limited resources is having a huge impact, not just on the town as a whole. Um, kind of broadly speaking in the community, but specifically to um, the town of Carbondale.
I want to just maybe add in there, like, I I, if I did the math right, and Michael's the numbers guy, um, that's about like over five hundred dollars for a return on every dollar spent with Carbondale Arts from the town. So we're hoping, I think we take it very seriously to be stewards of the money that you guys have given to us. Um, again, imperfect, doing our best all the time, but I just to put that, but I do think that there's something beyond just the ROI. Um, which is really, it's something that's felt, but not necessarily proven by the numbers, which is really, you know, the fact that, um, this is a quote from an artist who's kind, who has a show at, Michael Kinsley, who has a show at, and their gallery next month, who also had a long career at Rocky Mountain Institute, uh, doing community development. Um, and he's kind of says, "A bedrock foundation for local business success and more broadly, community strength, it's community cohesiveness." And community arts organizations build that cohesiveness in ways that are comfortable, enjoyable and durable. Those things kind of stick. And I, so I think there's something that I think tourism tries to do and we try to do, which is build um, a feeling of value just in the community that we live in.
And then we just have some quotes from folks that we've um, you know, been in partnership with who are small business owners. Obviously, as Kate mentioned, like, it's a challenge for small business owners. We, we recognize that. What we offer isn't a magic bullet to solve every business problem, but we do think that these events um, and that cohesion brings people out here, and it gives entrepreneurs an opportunity to take advantage of that, to offer something meaningful, valuable to the community, uh, and to capitalize on that, um, you know, that amount of people alone and and the values that we hold. I won't read these, um, they're in your packet. I think it's important to recognize that there are businesses that have started um, that have been doing very well, and they've kind of pointed, pointed to these events, both Mountain Fair and First Friday as as key in those. Um, Greg has shared like in-depth data with us, and it's been really compelling for us to see that there there is direct impact. It's measurable and 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 key to their business.
Hold on, before you, just because also I see Kerry here, and I know I just met with him yesterday and with some other Main Street businesses, I want to be really clear too, like, we've heard negative feedback also, and we're responding to it. Um, we take it seriously, and you know, if there are some Main Street businesses who aren't feeling great about some of the things at First Friday or Mountain Fair, we're listening and always actively trying to figure out how to respond to that feedback. I just wanted to make that clear.
Um, so these are some economic impacts too that go along with uh, some of the slides Michael talked earlier in regards to visitation. So again, looking at the numbers in regards to visitors. Back in two thousand twenty-four, um, two point two million visitors, um, sales tax collected was nine point three million. Um, lodging tax was just shy of two hundred thousand. And then again, looking from a business perspective in regards to total tourism businesses, we're right at one seventy-five. This number is a little unique. Carbondale does not have a business license, and so these numbers are directly um, correlated with the Carbondale Chamber businesses. Uh, but just thought that this would also be helpful to share in regards to those economic impacts. Um, and again, diving a little bit deeper of what that means for us here, um, again, as mentioned, that day visitor is ninety-six dollars. Um, leisure travel spends much more than that at one, five hundred fifty-one dollars um, per night, and then business travel is slightly above that. So again, thinking of additional ways and working together to really get people um, to stay and what makes them stick um, here in Carbondale. Um, I know that also gets a little creative as uh, regional and national tourism is also down, um, so continuing to brainstorm ways to keep them, um, to bring them here and then to keep them overnight. Uh, all right, jumping into needs and next steps. So. Okay, um, so just really briefly, again, we can, um, you can read through this in your packet, but just looking at ways again to bring people here and to get them to stay, um, Carbondale Tourism just went through a five-year strategic plan. Um, so again, this really outlines in detail in regards to um, these seven different strategies. Um, and then with that, I'll turn that over to Michael in regards to um, again, kind of what we're looking forward to and um, that survey.
Yeah, this is just some results from a pretty informal survey that we did around First Friday and some of the investments that we've made over the past year. The column on the left is kind of what have you enjoyed? The column on the right is what would you like to see? Um, we had, I think, a hundred and sixty-five results. Uh, like about a hundred of those were from the September First Friday when we were out there asking people to fill out that survey. There were cookies involved, so this might skew the data a little bit. Um, I think also the number one thing that people would like to see, more maker flea or um, farmers markets also maybe a little bit biased just based on the fact that that was happening at that moment. That was really well received, but um, you know, I think it's important to notice that there's something that we've heard and we we knew it kind of anecdotally is that uh, families have had a really difficult time finding uh, food to eat and getting into a restaurant or wanting to take little kids into a restaurant. So the food trucks has been something in addition to like the blue blocks and the seating and chairs that we wanted to try out this year to see if it provided more opportunity for the community to connect. Um, and recognizing that First Friday is is partly economic development, right? It's partly bringing people down to Main Street to support local businesses, but it's also part of that community building. And if we give them that opportunity to stay longer, to spend more time with their neighbors and friends, what does that create? And the results of that survey show that it was really appreciated. Um, obviously, you know, a a number of people who had the chance to tell us that they appreciated it, did, as well as the performers and the seating. I think all of that stuff goes together really well. In the right-hand column, you know, the there's, these was, this was like kind of short answer, so I've kind of combined the results. Um, I think importantly, at number two is this food truck thing coming up again. There were a few comments that didn't just say food trucks, but suggested can rest, local restaurants find a way to do grab and go? So is there a way that um, it's not just bringing in food trucks, but we're also finding ways to support those brick and mortar businesses that do have food offerings? La Raza has done this successfully during Mountain Fair and popped out and done quesadillas and street tacos and taken advantage of the foot traffic in front of their business. Uh, I think that's a great opportunity for uh, other restaurants to try out as well. There's been this conversation about an entertainment district. We're seeing that come up a lot in in the survey. Uh, and then I think the other pieces are the activities for kids, right? More things to keep them entertained so that they're not running wild in the streets or or challenging business owners. Um, and specifically for tweens, right, like that next group. The blue blocks are great for younger kids, but what what can we look at um, in terms of investing in some some games? Spike balls thrown out there, basketball was thrown out there as opportunities for um, kids of a little older age. And then I think we've touched on this a little bit, but we've done a fair amount of just listening to the community as well. Uh, we we held an event prize and projects kind of earlier in the spring around some of the things that Kate was talking about of uh, kind of what's happening, talking about the food truck court at uh, the other end of Main Street, talking about um, the lodging concepts that are being presented and just what some of the challenges were. Obviously, as a mission-based organization, we're not going to address all those, but just so you know, like parking comes up, building code comes up, uh, a lot of those kind of bigger picture things come up, and I know you guys are kind of actively talking about those. We also hear a lot that people want more events that aren't on First Fridays, right? Like, we're bringing a good number of people to town on that specific day. What else can be done to bring more people into town on other days? And then, as part of the pies and projects, one of the things that came out of it was this conversation that business owners felt like when you land here as a visitor, you know, you you kind of have to use your map and your your wherewithal to find your way around town. What if there was some additional wayfinding that could help direct visitors? Not just in telling them where things were, but um, kind of in creating that experiential opportunity to share what we value, what kind of community this is as well. So this is just a quick summary of things that we've been thinking about, kind of um, between the Chamber Tourism, Carbondale Arts, together with the town in terms of kind of what future investments could look like. Um, they're by no means kind of set in stone, but uh, I won't go through each of them. I think hopefully you've had a chance to look at them, uh, but I think it'd be great to just hear from from you. Um, if any of these feel critically important, if any of them seem like they're they're already um, being done and we don't need to focus more on them, or if there are things that aren't on this list that that should be added that our organizations um, could address. Uh, I think the one thing that is maybe worth mentioning is this kind of capacity ability building piece and the facilitation of kind of strategic partnership. There was an opportunity with uh, Community Builders, which um, Clark Anderson from there was here at the last time we presented to you guys. Their organization had an opportunity to do some focused planning. Um, that's an application that is due shortly. I don't think that uh, we're going to pursue that opportunity, but I think in thinking about it and looking at the questions for that application, we felt like there is value in having some more kind of strategic conversations with these three partners, and then, you know, maybe that next tier of bringing in additional people who have voices to add, have capacity to help the economic development of Carbondale.
Great, um, and I'll just add too, in regards to um, kind of the strategic partnerships, just really appreciate the trust that you have in all of us and also just the partnerships that we've created along the way and look forward um, to continuing to work with you. And I also wanted to mention just a couple of things too. We do have, from the Chamber and Tourism perspective, um, we are taking interest in appointments. So if there's anyone interested in joining our Carbondale Chamber Board or Tourism Board, um, feel free to reach out to me. Um, and I can send you the information. So again, just kind of going back and in ways that people can get involved and participate. And I also understand, you know, we've had um, some hard conversations in regards to to business and in ways that we can help support them from a Chamber perspective as well, and just appreciate those of you around the table that have um, extended an ear and listened in on those conversations. And I also just lastly wanted to comment that I had an entity come to me that's really interested in helping take the lift um, with the summer music concert series. Um, so really excited. That's very encouraging. So again, going back to Michael's comment about people wanting, you know, more events, but not on First Friday and continuing things that are going really well. Um, so it is great that people are coming to us and seeing us as that resource and wanting to move things forward. So more on that to come. So thank you very much.
Yeah, and I just add in, I I think I can speak for all of us in just saying thank you for your support this last year. And thank you for your time. We appreciated having the work session in the spring. I feel like it was a really great step and kind of figuring out how you know, work together better. I really appreciate Ryan giving us some time right out out of the gates, um, and starting, obviously, um, regular check-ins.
Great, well, excuse me, thanks for that presentation. I mean, maybe to frame up a probably what's a pretty brief conversation here with. Great. Well, excuse me. Thanks for that presentation. I mean, maybe to frame up a probably what's a pretty brief conversation here with a couple questions and feedback. I think the timing of this is is good because we're about to look at a draft budget. We'll see both organizations in there as our economic development strategy and it's a, you know, fairly small line item for both of these organizations as we just saw with a pretty big return on investment. So I think it's just good for for us to be familiar with the type of work that you've been doing and what what it might look like going forward. I think what you shared as feedback from folks and next steps is we're hearing that consistently. We're hearing about challenges with building and permitting and we're working on those. We hear about the need for more lodging and to keep people here and support our local businesses and restaurants that we know that are just local visitation isn't enough to support. We continue to hear about events, not just on First Friday, and then the wayfinding stuff a- as well. So I I think there's a good theme that's emerging out of this. I look forward to this process that started with Community Builders that you just mentioned. Even though we're not going forward with that, but just the idea that we're going to have a serious discussion about what does economic development look like in the next year with both your organization, with other local businesses, whether on their own Main Street or not, but make sure that, you know, all the voices are in the room. And really figure out what what we want to do next. So I just appreciate the the update. I don't have any specific questions or feedback other than to say I feel like we're pretty well aligned. We're hearing the same things quite a few times. That gives me quite a bit of optimism that we'll be able to make progress on those in the next year. Questions, comments, or feedback from other board members?
Thanks for a great, great presentation. I think lots of, lots of interesting stuff in there. I don't think it's any surprise to us that 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 your organizations bat well, you're punch way above their level. And and as much as I love a scrappy organization, I also think that like the analog to or the the definition of that can also be underfunded. And and I feel like if we have all-stars or people really being paid salaries, who who are there ready to do good work and we can't provide the the materials or the extra help or or whatever they may need to really leverage that and leverage all the organization or all the organization, existing organizations in volunteer spirit of our community, then I think that that's a miss. And, you know, there are plenty of, we can, you know, sort of debate where 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 and when it's best to put our money, but I think one thing that I, I mean, I I just, I think that the arts, I think it's very obvious that this town identifies itself very strongly with the arts programs and very specifically with the arts programs of Carbondale Arts. I'm in the work of the chamber and tourism as well. And and I think I think we can put more money in that direction and I'd be open to, you know, looking at, looking at a larger a larger line item in in our budget, given that that's a fraction of other things that we have, I mean, doubling that would be a fraction of what we've, you know, allowed as a rounding error on other projects. And and I just, I just think that we we, the return on investment there is is so big that it that I I think we should remain scrappy and energetic, but not not being starved for 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 funds that we might need to make to make this community what it is. And aside from, obviously, the permit thing is something that we need to do. You know, the interesting thing about the grab and go that was brought up, I think, is also that we ought, that that I don't want to get away, I don't want to get away from some personal responsibility on the part of businesses to to be creative in their own right. And and if we obviously as a as a community should facilitate and allow, you know, have room for creativity, room for flexibility, but also demand that creativity of our of our business community as well. And that's, and I think the folks who have 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 come to the table with with ideas are are ones that have ended up prospering and they do get our help. But if there's anything that we can do in that department, great. And then finally, and I think this is more a result of just some recent visits, I would love to see, I guess, in respect to our need for wayfinding, some sort of visitor center thing on our Main Street. Because we, you know, it it is, you you come to Carbondale, you come to the heart of Carbondale, and there's no one saying, welcome to Carbondale. Hey, let me get, let me tell you where to go. I mean, there's there's probably five hundred people ready to do that, but but there's no, no, no signage that says this is this is where you go to get that first step or get a suggestion for lunch or or any of those things. And I would love to find some way to have a visitor center in 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 downtown. In my dreams, that was in our old Forest Service building. But it shall remain there. In in place of it, I don't know where we can go, but I wonder whether maybe in the interim, it is the launchpad. You know, whether there is at least something saying, hey, there's someone in there who can, it's it is an art center and first place to stop or or something like that. Those are my thoughts. Thank you so much for a great presentation. Thanks, Ross.
I have a quick question and then have a few thoughts. Remind me, is the entertainment district where you can, you know, people can drink open container in a designated area? Okay, because I was going to raise that as well, only because I was attending the block party on Broadway in Denver randomly with family. And I took a video because I noted that it was not fenced off and every restaurant had booths on the street where they were also serving like two signature cocktails or something. And so it was really active, but it, you know, their whole purpose is to bring people to that section of Broadway and show off all these cool restaurants that are down there. And so I thought of, because I do agree, it's really hard to go to First Friday and get into a restaurant with any larger group than two, it seems like. My husband prefers second Saturday, or what's he call it? Yeah, second Saturdays. And finds that there's kind of nobody there then. But anyway, I was just wondering where things were with the the possibility of the entertainment districts. I think seems like that would also solve a lot of problems if restaurants wanted to activate on the street a little bit differently.
I mean, where is that discussion now? I mean, we were here, I think, when we talked about that, it was six years ago or so, if I remember correctly, and it's been a long time. And there were a lot of complicating factors that sort of got overly bureaucratic and and it lost its steam.
My quick summary, and Andrea can probably add on to this, is that it had been a conversation at least probably starting six years ago, and I think when new police chief came to town, he saw that as a potential solution to them having to deal with a lot of citations for open containers, right? And so there were conversations about it. I think ultimately the town decided that this needed to be something that the the businesses initiated and that it wasn't the town who was gonna advance that. And so that piece just hasn't happened. I think there is some bureaucratic, like there needs to be a governing body and structure to it, but from what I've heard, it's like it's kind of a formality. They just need to meet and take minutes and 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 deal with that, just like many local kind of nonprofit organizations do. So I don't think the challenges are as high as they maybe seemed. I think it's just a matter of coordination and alignment with businesses.
And I might just add, it requires a certain amount of consensus among the businesses on Main Street, and I'm not sure if we can get there.
And I'll I'll mention to, I feel like over time, there's less and less red tape, so the example is like not a physical barrier. And so I think that it's becoming more, there's more of an opportunity and we can definitely look into that, but it does take the buy-in from the businesses. And then also there's some some governance and annual meetings and things that need to take place. But, you know, I think if that's definitely something that the business community and at First Friday and other entities want to pursue, we could definitely look into that further.
Thanks. How does, how does one draw a line around the district or do you, like, do you have to create a perimeter around this thing or? I mean, it's a soft, I mean, it's a drawn line on a map. It's not like a fenced in thing that has to get dealt with each time you enact it.
So it seems like something, maybe that's part of these conversations over the next year about how do we activate times outside of First Friday? And maybe it's for First Friday too, but it just seems like it's worth returning to that conversation and learning about that and seeing what's involved.
Yeah, and that's what I was wondering is if the community is interested, if businesses are interested, I think we'd be willing to hear more or put in what we need to do, you know, because it was, it did create a whole different dynamic where you could just walk around with your beer or I, you know, go get a interesting spiked drink at the Japanese restaurant or something and walk around. And so I, and it seems like I, there's so, our police are doing so much work watching people in the street and making sure they're not drinking that like, I don't know, it feels like there's a balance there and maybe the red tape that was there before or has been relaxed a little bit. Because there definitely, I just remember we talked about there had to be like the cup had to be marked.
It got out of control.
Yeah.
Those discussions.
These were not marked cups that we were consuming on Broadway. There was a juice box of sake that somebody was drinking, like it had, everything was there and available. So I just think it's worth exploring. Because the other thing was I've noticed in other farmers markets, because I also went to a farmer's market in Denver, is there was a local distiller selling their whiskey at a farmer's market and providing tasters at ten in the morning or whatever. But I was just kind of like, oh, I felt like we couldn't do that. So I think maybe it's worth exploring. Or if we need to change our rules or something and put more work on Patrick to make some losing money. And I'm not advocating that we suddenly have booze everywhere all the time, but just noticing that it seemed like there were rules being applied in Denver that we thought we couldn't do. So a couple of other things is I would, I I couldn't tell, but it looks like we gave thirty thousand to Creative District and forty thousand last year. I would definitely be interested in at least getting Creative District up to forty thousand. And I'd also be interested in listening to putting some more funding into First Friday for all the resources that you guys have invested. I think the tables are awesome and the games are really, really cool for all ages. It seemed like a lot of people were really partaking. I think you guys made a good choice on Community Builders. I think Clark should actually hire you guys to go consult with him and other communities. So I'm really excited that we get to, you know, kind of take on that work with you. And then on the permitting, I just want us as a board to kind of think about. We've asked a consultant to come in and review our codes on ADUs, but it's almost like we need to have a little bit of a backed-up discussion of like, what is getting in the way of our requirements that gets in the way for businesses to be able to do what seem like maybe simple or small things. And I don't know if there's a consultant that looks at that or, but how we could step back a little bit in addition to getting the software and improving our own processes, but what are, what do we have in place that suddenly is making it really clunky for businesses to move forward on projects? And then on the ROI, I think it's awesome to have those numbers, but I do think that there's intrinsic worth to just having these kinds of things happening. So I don't want to get too bogged down in like, there has to be an ROI. What are we getting out of this? Because people love these things. They love these events. They love your organizations. And we would be a very different community without all of you. So there's a lot of intrinsic worth in all of that. So thank you.
Great. Anything else for this discussion, Kristin?
I just want to comment. I think everything is great. Thanks for the presentation and the future investments to me all look great. I I do appreciate all the data and and analysis that you guys put into it. I think it just helps and when we're reporting out to the community. I know as a representative, as a trustee, it just helps me tell people in that data. So I think that is always a good investment. I did, kind of going back to Janet, what he was saying about small businesses and echoing what Erica's saying about, you know, making some things easier for small businesses, because I always wondered like, well, why aren't more small businesses involved with the chamber? But, you know, hearing from a small business owner, it's time is money and it's hard, you know, especially when you're trying to like, I just can't, you know, I'm not going to get paid off if I go to the chamber meeting. But in one, I feel like it was one of the municipality meetings or discussions, they were talking about how they you know, were helping with their small business community and they were saying that they launched a business retention. It was like a group, it was called a program. It was a business retention and expansion program. And I remember writing that down because I thought maybe, you know, we could focus on that for business retention and expansion, like going out and asking like, you know, what what does it take to to keep a business and and what are some of the, you know, what are, what are some of the issues, the bottlenecks or, you know, the workforce needs? And then going back to, there has, maybe that group could figure out with, like, what's a one-stop permit? A one-stop permitting for opening, for small businesses especially and some regulatory guide. I think that's huge. I know we went through a small business opening and I had just recently got my MBA and you don't learn about municipality challenges and all that. So I think it's worth it. I mean, small businesses are such, you know, one of the reasons why we stay in Carbondale, so. But great job.
Thanks, Christina. Jess, did you have something?
I just wanted to say thank you for your efforts. I know it takes a lot of work and I know that it's not, it's not an easy task to please everybody. I know that there's some disagreement among the businesses on Main Street about what's best and how to best activate it. And I think it would, I think it would be interesting to look at economic development without tourism, like if we just took the tourism lens off of economic development and spend some time looking at what makes Carbondale great? If we, like, if we, if we weren't just looking at who's coming in and staying the night. Because I think that this conversation that's happening around how do we activate Carbondale not on a First Friday really comes down to the people who live here and the people who are in this community day to day. I think that's part of what what was being hoped for with the music series is it was like for for the people of Carbondale. And so I think there's barriers in opening businesses. There's barriers in improving businesses. There's barriers in keeping good people in Carbondale. And I think we need to be looking at the people who are already here and the businesses who are already here. So I like the idea of this retention idea. I think that and none of this is like a, I'm just spitballing. I'm not like criticizing you guys because I love you guys. I just think it would be an interesting work session around table to really look at how we support who's already here and the people like, you know, like me and the people I spend time with in the community. I mean, I eat out and I literally justify it as economic development. I justified in a lot of other ways too. That's, that's my best reason. So I like this idea of trying to get some more people at the table, creating some sort of committee and maybe that committee becomes this downtown entertainment district push. Maybe those are the people you want at the table to make that happen. So I'd be open to having those conversations in here. I'd be open to having those conversations outside of these rooms. I just think it's really important, you know, I have a small business and we need to do improvements to our space and we're sort of at a standstill in that regard. So and we, we, you know, I hear all the time that there's nowhere to go if you want a bigger space or like a medium-sized space. And how do we support businesses who want to expand but can't afford, you know, an upstairs space at the Dinkle Building? So those are just my thoughts. Thanks for everything you guys are doing.
Thanks, Jess. Anything else that hasn't been said that needs to be said? I want to move us on to the next item, but.
I mean, I I guess I'd just say, no, I, I notice everything else has been said, but just, I guess, I do think in the biggest, bigger picture, the, to me, the Town Center project continues to be, I know it is affordable housing project, but I feel like it's an economic development project at its heart in a lot of ways. And just keeping our eyes on the ball there and maybe being willing to make making that jump to making an investment in it as an economic development thing and sort of if we're trying to think about commercial or spaces on the ground floor that don't pencil out, how to, you know, I think just maybe not having to, yeah, being able to think about them from this lens of economic development, I think is important.
Okay, thanks, Chris.
Thank you both organizations for what you're doing. I think we're very unique in the valley in terms of having two such organizations, one that focuses on regular businesses and one that focuses in the arts. So we really appreciate you guys working together. Given what you've heard, I would encourage you to come back with something that proposes what you'd like to do. And from a financial standpoint, what's that going to take? We might not be able to do it all, but I'd like to find ways that we could support you, but I think there's lots of great ideas up here, but you guys are the boots on the ground. And if you could share with us what you need, we can have that discussion. we can have that discussion and figure out how much can we get you to help? This is a really important conversation. There's multiple strategies. Uh, you're doing some, there's others we might include, but this is a great discussion. I just wanna make sure you guys have some of the support you need to take us to the next step, because this is all gonna be iterative. We're not gonna solve it in one year. So um, really appreciate all you're doing.
Awesome. Thank you.
Okay, thank you all.
Thanks everyone.
Kind of, I mean. To add directly relevant to this, Carrie, I mean, it's not really a public comment.
I've been thinking about this since last week. I'll be very quick. I'm here as a business owner.
You wanna state your name for the record?
Oh, sorry, Kerry Shanks, Marble Distilling Company.
Thank you.
Uh, and I do have the proxy of other businesses, not just Main Street, but also the second corridor, which is one thirty-three, which continues to develop. Um, and I, I come here in the interest of having the diversity of business brought to the table going forward, however that looks. Um, you know, we're here talking about economic development and it's a focus on Carbondale Arts. My mom, for the record, owned an art gallery for thirty years. I exhibit local artists in my hotel rooms and in my tasting room. All about it. But I, I think there's a broader picture. I heard about affordable housing in the room. I heard about different businesses. I heard about business outside of Peak, First Fridays and Mountain Fair. These are all things that go to the broader reach. I heard today from a business in Basalt that with labor costs and supply costs, this valley is in for a rude awakening. If local businesses, F and B was the context, can't afford to raise their prices to stay in business, to keep profitability, their margins are shrinking. So I think a broader context of economic development is what I'm encouraging. Uh, we believe it's in our best interests as groups for uh, everybody to be working together. Allegria just left. I've heard that two others on Main Street are going. I run a hotel. And when I hear from my guests that Saturday afternoon is quiet, Sundays are quieter. There's a challenge because it's not a big building that manages people's times, et cetera. Uh, it's real hard to get people, but I think we need to make local business more uh, brought to the table. Um, you know, arts is uh, one spoke in the hub. And it's a big one here. Historically, traditionally, what Amy started, what Jamie's doing, it's a big part. But there are others all around town. Um, a primary concern from Main Street with First Friday, and not to be a bone of contention, but when you have a hundred and sixty-five, let's say a hundred and eighty people answer for sixty-five hundred people, two thousand twenty at sixty-three, thirty-five population, I'm gonna bump to sixty-five hundred. You're talking under three percent hit rate on response, which let's assume some of those were out of towners. So I think we need to continue to dig into that issue, because the challenge from local bricks and mortar, whether you're triple net or a mortgage owner paying tens of thousands of dollars. In my case, my wife said, say it, fifty-five thousand dollars to the county in property taxes. If you're getting cannibalized, that's where the bone of contention is. It doesn't mean that anybody's right or wrong, you know? It just means local businesses, yes, they get crowded, we get tsunamis. I like the idea of creativity and thinking of different ways. I love the idea which Connie and I brought before the town a long time ago, and there was a lot of Heismans, right? We would love to participate in making that happen. I don't think it's just the businesses. I think some of the budget of the arts or the chamber could be a part of, I think the town's issue was how do you build insecurity, right? I think we're all about it. Uh, trying to show us to be positive. There are uh, material questions on official permitted food trucks versus unpermitted that just show up. Are they paying taxes as a taxpayer? I, I think a lot of us wanna know that. Um, you know, the hyper-focus on geographic area of certain events, where if you did that broader Main Street program, I think we all come out to participate and come up with ideas. So in conclusion, local businesses would like a seat at the table in a more robust way going forward. Uh, local businesses need to put up or shut up and not just be bitches and moaners and complainers, right? We owe that to you all. We owe it to the arts in the chamber. And I think that's where we stand. We are beginning to collect and meet, and I think you all need to know that. That's where I think talking to people, we're gonna have to put up. Uh, we come in the spirit of cooperation and partnering towards a strategic action plan forward. And we understand it's complex and challenging, yet as material stakeholders, we just don't wanna be left out of the mix. I heard the other day a brilliant young man say, if we have two commercial nodes, does Main Street become this real vibrant, vibrant activation event space? And one thirty-three as it develops, it becomes what it becomes as the core, right? As a commercial node. But we have two nodes and I think we, you know, Mark needs to be heard, Stacy. Uh, the goat is never heard. And I just wanna come here in the spirit of cooperation and encourage a lot of positive things I heard in the room, not the least of which is affordable housing.
Okay, thank you, Carrie.
Thank you.
Thanks. Okay, moving on to the next item, which is the Strong Start Bright Future Ballot Initiative. Familiar faces. Welcome back Heather.
Can't get rid of us.
Rob, nice to see you both.
Oh yeah, I'll just share. There's slides from here.
You wanna just do them for now?
Yeah, I just, I have it ready.
Are you going by Maggie these days?
Yeah. It's my alter ego.
Just wanted to check.
She's, she knows. She's just the one that's getting everything done.
Okay, let's um, maybe start with introductions and maybe tell us a little bit about, kind of frame this up for us. What would you like to see from us tonight, if anything? Is this just informational? And then we'll um, look forward to your presentation.
I'll, I'll do my intro and then I'll run this. Uh, so Heather Henry, not Maggie. Um, and yeah, familiar faces. Even those of you I haven't seen in a while. So hi. Uh, I am now currently the Vice President of Housing and Childcare at Aspen One. Um, that is my current role. That's what brings me to this effort and our, our, meaning Aspen One's um, unequivocal support of this effort.
Rob Stein, former Superintendent of Roaring Fork Schools, which is now much, in much better hands since I left. Um, and I did not retire, but I have sure had a hard time making a living doing projects like this. I got very passionate about early childhood education when I was with the school district, because I realized K-12 starts too late. So we're gonna give you more reasoning behind that. What we're gonna ask of you tonight is endorsement for a ballot initiative, uh, ballot initiative, initiative seven A, which um, you'll have an opportunity to vote on in, in November.
Yeah, so not here to ask for money. Um, maybe one of the few at this time of year. Um, so give us just a second here. Gotta get this thing out of the way. Okay, so we're gonna do a few slides. You know, really, I don't, I, I hope this isn't contentious or a hard decision for you all. Uh, again, what we are asking for tonight is your endorsement of this effort and the ballot initiative. But the, so the slides really being a way to um, make sure if you do have any questions, we're able to answer those. And also just arm this group, the people watching, the millions that watch your videos after your meetings end, um, to just make sure that you have some of the information. So when you're talking about this on the street um, and at your next dinner party, um, you know, this is gonna be a lift, this, this ballot initiative. So I think everything from the formalized endorsements to the conversations that we're having informally, we've really gotta get the message out there, the information out there, um, the breadth and depth of the problem out there and how this can really be a very targeted solution.
Excellent. So um, rationale, why do we think this is so important? First of all, the most important form of years in our development as human beings are the first five years, when probably ninety percent of brain development happens. Um, and children who have access to high-quality early childcare and early um, or preschool, early um, childhood education um, are not only better prepared for kindergarten, which you might expect, they do better in school, they read earlier. Um, they have higher grades throughout their, their academic careers. They're more likely to go to college. They're more likely to um, develop interpersonal skills, uh, self-regulation, other life skills that serve them, not just as students, but as, as um, as people in life. Um, go back for me for a minute there. By the way. We got a runaway presentation. I'll just keep talking. Um, and um, they're more likely to attend college and hold down jobs for the duration of their careers. There's even evidence that early childhood education correlates with um, lower incarceration rates. Um, our problem, next slide, in our communities is that there's a shortage of access to early care. Um, our region has only about forty-four percent of the early childhood slots that we need for our kids and families. Um, and it's exorbitantly expensive. So um, it takes about a thirty-five percent of, 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 of your income to have two kids in childcare. Right now, the average tuition for early childhood is about seventeen to eighteen thousand dollars, which if you have two kids, it's the same as paying a college tuition. It's just a really costly, and so we're seeing families making really tough choices.
And this is in comparison to seven percent, which is the federal government's recommendation on how much should be spent um, on childcare. And even if we're to give that some cushion, the Roaring Fork, you know, and larger Roaring Fork, Greater Roaring Fork Valley cushion, ten percent is what the organization has been using. We, we'd really like to get people closer and closer and, and fill in this delta.
So a survey in um, Garfield County, um, parents reported that um, eighty-eight, sixty-eight percent of parents reported that childcare problems prevented them from seeking employment or educational opportunities. And fifty-six percent of parents reported that childcare problems caused them to quit a job, not take a job, or significantly change a job. So we're seeing people are having a hard time entering or staying in the workforce because of, of the costs or the availability of early childcare. When we know there's a Nobel laureate, Ja- James Haxman, who, who did this study and learned that there's a thirteen percent annual return on investment for early childhood education. So just imagine over the course of a lifetime, how much interest is accruing, how much benefit is accruing for um, you know, for, for those who, who have been able to invest in early childhood. Um, in Garfield alone, Ready Nation's recent study found that lack of adequate um, childcare um, is costing thirty-one point five million dollars. Um, so we're seeing huge local impact of, of the lack of childcare.
So why regional? Um, and, and this is really a critical component of this effort and of the coalition. And like housing, like transportation, none of the steps at the borders of our municipalities, our counties, et cetera. Um, the, the information from the coalition, so honor information at Aspen One and surveying our employees is that there's a really critical decoupling that parents um, are interested in as they think about childcare. And it's where do I live, where do I work, and where is my childcare? And that's really part of this regional approach, is being able to decouple some of those things. So while we might do a program, a childcare subsidy that helps our employees, when you can couple that then with a larger subsidy that might come from the coalition, et cetera, now I don't feel bound to my position. I know that some of that financial support is gonna be there throughout my, you know, journey of bright childcare, et cetera. Um, as well, this is really just looking at and thinking about where jobs are generated, where folks are living, where they're commuting to, just how to kind of put that all together in this solution and think about it regionally.
So as I mentioned, I got really interested in this as Superintendent of the Roaring Fork Schools. And I was in fact a charter member of a group that started in twenty sixteen to consider what would it take to have a regional approach to affordable access to, to early childhood. Um, and we went through, well, the counties, the municipalities, the school districts, there just wasn't a, a way to pull it off. And so what we started doing in the we is early childhood providers, all the school districts from Aspen to Parachute, many of the nonprofits and um, some of the government entities were all working together to try to solve this problem. We actually went through legislature to pass a law in twenty nineteen that allowed us to create a special taxing district. Because as you all know, cause you live here in this region, that there isn't just a, a neat um, human constructed boundary that, that defines our region. So now there's a, now we have this capacity to ask the voters to actually approve a tax for this special district um, that, that would run from, from Aspen to Parachute. Um, if, I think the next slide tells you some of the conceptual approach. And what we did is researched a lot of um, we're not the first to try this in Colorado and certainly not nationwide. So we looked at a lot of other models. And what we found, and I'll start sort of on the upper left, is that um, probably the most important thing is to just provide a direct tuition subsidy to families so that that can help them offset the costs of early childcare. And there are already some subsidies, but it depends on where you live. It depends on the age of your kid. Sometimes it depends on other characteristics of, of your child. Um, so we wanna do this in a way that any funding we add would be braided with existing funding and add on to it and be flexible enough for the needs of the family and also be portable enough. So that depending where you work or where you live in the region, you'd still be eligible. But one of the challenges is that, that there's not enough capacity. So we realize we need to structure some of it for grants to providers, probably especially at the outset to help um, increase capacity in the marketplace so that people have a place to send their kids. Um, and then we wanna make sure that because of all these streams and because of the challenge in just finding quality childcare, we wanna uh, build in a navigation component to allow people to access services without duplicating some of those that already exist through other entities. And then we set a commitment of five percent max on administration and evaluation. Evaluation is really important. We wanna make sure that we upfront establish our metrics and monitor them over time. So we're not just throwing money at the wall, but we're really um, targeting specific goals and, and moving to address them. The next slide shows how it would be governed by a four, five-person board. Each director district would have a slice of the counties. We structured it so that the voters within a director district would select their director. And we did that in part because of feedback we've heard as we developed this project, just people really wanted to make sure that there's some control over it. And this has not just become some unresponsive government or bureaucratic entity. And so we structured it so that each district has its own, its own board members representing them. And then they would of course, you know, manage the budget, hire the, the, the staff. Um, we're, we're shooting for a point two-five percent sales tax um, with exclusions for um, necessities like groceries, feminine hygiene projects, pharmaceuticals, gasoline and other things like that. Because we wanna, uh, we wanna burden families as little as possible. The whole point is to help families um, by giving them better access to childcare, not increase their, you know, taxes for essentials. So that's the concept. Um, we moved kind of quickly, but if you have questions, we'd love to hear them. And of course, what we're asking for is your, your formal endorsement, not only as, as, as a board, but individually, we'd love to have you sign up as well.
Great. Thanks for a very efficient presentation. Um, hopefully people have heard about this a little bit and it might not be the first, first word that you've heard of it. But I think this is a great time for questions and then we can talk about if we're inclined to support it, uh, what the best method to do that is. We didn't, we don't have like a resolution in the packet and we're next meeting three weeks out. So you know, I think we could probably take a quick vote and say this board supports this initiative, um, if we wanna do that. Um, but if we need more time or if we need to come back to it, we can do that as well. So questions, thoughts on any of that?
I'll just say that I'm totally for it.
Okay.
I have a clarifying question.
Okay.
Um, does, will voters be voting to both create the district and implement the tax? The district isn't already existing.
We're doing it. You, you, some of you may know a lot about Tabor and I don't, but we decided to bundle the two questions to create the district and do the tax in one question, because you can't separate them. Um, and we got legal advice on that.
And select your board.
Yep, so then you'll have, you'll have two questions. The other is about your, your district threes, is this um, Carbondale area. Your district three board member who happens to be running on a post, so it won't be much of a question.
So on the ballot, we'll have a question on the district, the tax, and then the question under it theoretically is electing that board member.
A separate question, yes.
You would do all three on this ballot?
Okay.
That's correct.
Cool.
And the districts are just set by population?
Yeah, there's some statutory stuff that boils down to common sense. Try to keep them like um, together as communities, balance the population. balance the population numbers, things like that. And so we spent a lot of time with the maps tinkering.
And are those set perpetuity or do they?
No, they can revise it over time, exactly like a school district does it. And I imagine other, like Fire Districts or things like that probably do it as well.
I have a question, because I know there's like already a shortage of early learning hood, you know, workers, I would say. Because I work at CMC, and I know we're always trying to train, and it comes, and it's, there's that big challenge. So my thing, my question is, this gets approved, then we don't have the workforce, you know, available for the support. And does this offer support for the workforce?
Yes, it does. And that's part of the grants to providers, and that's part of that capacity building. Is it may, it may need to go, in some cases, to augmenting salaries. We know that, I think the average is like fifteen dollars per hour for an early childhood teacher, which is incredibly low. And then, of course, it's what's available in terms of the kinds of centers varies a lot when you move sort of west to east.
Thank you.
Are we inclined to pass a resolution in support of this tonight? Or our next meeting is actually three weeks out, which is not great for getting the word out of support. Are people inclined to pass a resolution in support? And I think it can be pretty straightforward. Sometimes you have a big resolution with a bunch of whereas statements, but I think this can just be a simple resolution in support. So if anybody would like to make.
Childcare is a key economic.
I regret we actually have a sample resolution, but I didn't submit it to you all. That's our mistake.
Yeah, I think if you, if you pass that this evening, we can then work with staff and get that and the template and make it really easy for you all.
Yeah, maybe a motion could be to authorize the mayor to sign a resolution in support of this. And then we can work on it, and I can sign it outside the meeting.
And that, that resolution could say that the board is unanimous in its support of this resolution.
Yeah.
That would make sense, for this, this statement, whatever it is.
Yeah, so if anybody wants to make a motion.
Make a motion.
Go for it.
To allow the mayor to sign a resolution endorsing this with our unanimous approval.
Second.
Is that good enough, Patrick, for the record? Basically, this is in support of, what's the ballot issue called?
Seven A. Strong Start Bright Future.
Okay. Okay, so we have a motion from Jess, and did you second it?
Yeah.
Erica seconded it. Any questions or discussion before we vote? All the favors say aye.
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 Okay.
And so lastly, again, for your large viewership watching and you all, so our website, strongstartbrightfuture.com. The other thing we'd encourage is there's a way to go on there, sign up for updates, as well as put your own individual endorsement, which would be great. So the more we can build that endorsement, as we're advertising, it'll be both the board and its unanimous decision and you all as individuals feel strongly about the effort.
Comment that it's no small thing for a municipality that depends almost entirely on sales tax to vote in support of what ultimately is competing for a limited, there's, there's a ceiling to how high sales tax can go. Most people say somewhere around ten percent. And I would also note the Fire District has a one-point-five percent sales tax on the ballot, and it's going to be tough. And then there's the unrelated, but some school lunch funding things that are income taxes on high-income earners. And then the Fire District has a bond issue, and I'm not sure what else is going to be on there. But even in sort of an off year, it's going to be a fairly crowded ballot. And I do think as a municipality, you know, we thought about going forward with a sales tax question in April for capital, because we don't have a dedicated source of capital funding, and we decided we weren't ready with a really clear plan and everything. But we need to watch these, right? And we need to, so it's a strong show of support is what I'm getting at. Because we need that, there's a, there's a little sliver left between the eight and a half or so percentage it's at now and about the ten percent general kind of tolerance level that I think people have for sales tax. And so as we make each of these decisions to support something and to vote individually, we just have to keep in mind our own needs as well.
Thank you very much. I'm glad you made that speech after you voted.
Yeah.
But I think that was good, good to make that point. And we may have to, I think it does make it more incumbent on us to be creative and willing to think outside the box on revenue besides sales tax. Not, not throw it away necessarily, but.
We won't have sales tax.
Thank you.
We don't have businesses with employees that have childcare for their children.
Yeah. Okay, next discussion is Path to Net Zero and Clear Strategies. I see Jeff and Lauren. Join us, please. Welcome back.
Talk amongst yourselves.
Well, I'll say a couple of things and then let you introduce yourselves and get started. This was a doozy of a packet. Like, there's a lot, there's a lot in there. And I think what will be our challenge right now is to, for, with your help, to frame this in a way, like what do we really need to get to tonight? We're certainly not going to get into every detail. But it's really helpful to see these roadmaps for new construction and existing buildings at the back of the packet. But this, and then there's a, you know, bonus thing at the end about the revenue stream and the accelerator grant. Like, there's a lot to talk about here. Patrick put this as fifteen minutes on the agenda. I think, I think we'll go a little beyond that. But I just want to be really clear before we start, like introduce yourselves. But then what do you want to, what do you want to hear from us tonight? What's critical that we get to? And then there might be some things that we come back to later.
Right, and a lot of that is just background.
Great.
We're not going to go over everything. Don't worry.
Okay. I was a little worried.
Make sure your mic's on.
Yeah, green is good on those.
Yeah, green? Am I green?
Label on that.
I'm Jeff Dickinson with Biospaces Energy Consulting, consultants at Clear and other organizations in the Valley.
Lauren Serbia with Clear.
Great.
And good to see you all.
Nice to see you too. Yeah, so frame it up for us. I mean, kind of what are, what's our goal for the evening in this discussion?
It's really, do you want to take it? Go ahead.
So we'd love to, one, have a, just a check-in, a short, I actually thought we had more time on the agenda. So a short conversation about some of the strategies and a little bit of feedback about where to head for Path to Net Zero. We can also identify, I think, another work session time to dig into any decisions that might be made. We have, I think in each category, we'll just kind of walk you through, this would be good to make a decision on tonight or ask you to find a time for further discussion, you know, as we round out the year. But definitely the Path to Net Zero is a great starting point, as well as the Impact Accelerator is a timely discussion as well.
Okay. And we're not totally bound by our fifteen minutes. I just mean, it's not set up as like an hour-long, in-depth discussion. And so I think we'll just want to really make sure we're getting you the feedback that you need, answering the questions that you need. Oftentimes, these are informing our budget discussions or whatever, so.
Right, and we're not going to go into code stuff, and Path to Net Zero, you all heard that. It's just a reminder that we did do a lot of work. And we always like to start with this kind of slide, just Carbondale's taken the lead in the, in the western slope of Colorado for years since really twenty, two thousand six, really in the late nineteen hundreds. I guess you can say it that way. Oh my gosh, it sounded weird. You know, and by, you know, milestones of like founding Garfield Clean Energy and implementing all these codes. And then, you know, this year, July first, through the, all the work that everybody put in, you know, Aaron particularly lately, adopting the IECC and those amendments. And just always want to underscore what the, you know, the goals are and why we have these paths to net zero and these roadmaps are to reduce energy use by fifty percent by twenty thirty and a hundred percent by twenty. Oh my gosh, that's coming up. We ought to, let's make a roadmap so that the community, the developers, the builders, the citizens know what, what we're getting, heading towards. So that's basically what, what that's about. All right, go on. Here we go. So it's really about Clear and what Clear's work plan is. So, you know, supporting Carbondale's climate initiatives, supporting those, the energy code adoption and the path to net zero, really staying, you know, taking that leadership role in Garfield Clean Energy. And then Lauren will get into some of the other programs that is being offered both as a Garfield Clean Energy offering, but also as the special sort of platinum-level services that, that happen for the town of Carbondale. This, Jess mentioned this, but this Impact Accelerator grant is, is kind of something we want to spend a little extra time on. So if you want to talk about that, it's an opportunity that's coming right up.
So to respect time here, this is just an exceptional opportunity, and we wanted to flag it as something that we put a little information in the packet about. But we'd love to open the door to see if the town of Carbondale would be interested in supporting a grant which is from the state of Colorado. It was dedicated funding of, actually of several, a couple of years ago, a year and a half ago, that is finally being released for, solely for local governments, not for districts, not for authorities around the state to really push policy and support project infrastructure money around that policy or tangential to that policy in certain sectors. And so this letter of interest is due November seventeenth, and we wanted to bring the opportunity to you and hear potentially Jess's feedback as well from the GCE meeting because she serves on the GCE board, and there was a conversation about that, about, you know, what this opportunity could mean and how could Carbondale kind of play a role in it. So I might, I, it's sort of the details in the packet, but maybe we'd just love to hear from you, Jess, if you're willing to share with us.
GCE is looking for, what I can understand is that GCE is wondering if Carbondale is willing to be a lead municipal applicant on this grant, which it's a very complicated grant. There are lots of different ways you can apply for the grant. Like, the policy does not have to have to do with the project, but there's two, up to two hundred thousand dollars in the policy work and up to one-point-eight million dollars in the project work. I, I'm going to meet with a couple of other board members from GCE next week with GCE to talk about this grant. And so I'd like to get a, sort of a temperature of our board to see if we're interested in that. I think Clear and GCE are really looking, their hope is that the policy that they're looking to work toward is this dedicated funding source for GCE. Because as you all know, Garfield County is one of the bigger contributing members, and they're cutting their contribution this, this next year by more than half. And so there's just, GCE needs to have a dedicated funding source in order to be sustainable long-term. And that's really the gist of what I understand. I'm unclear on what that means for Carbondale as the lead municipal member. But essentially, GCE can't go for the grant itself. They need a municipal, a municipality to step forward and be the lead on the grant. And it might, you know, I have a couple of, I have a few concerns about staffing and how, how our staff is burdened with this grant if we go for it and it, what it looks like for a five percent match. Because does that come from just Carbondale? Does it come from all of the GCE members? Does it come from GCE funding? Is that even possible? So there's still a lot of questions around it. But I, because of timing, they need to know if we're interested in being the lead.
And it's just submitting a letter of interest at this point. It's not doing the, the whole thing. And historically, what we've done is supplied for these grants, and the, and the town has had very little to do with it, if you will, you know, and it funds the ongoing work that supports the town. So it's just a way to channel that state and sometimes federal money into the town to relieve the burden on the town staff.
And just in a little bit more historical context, when, before GCE was its own authority, there was funding received from the Department of Energy through the state of Colorado that was, went through Garfield County. And so really, that's what brought the funding to the region and then helped create GCE in the end, and then it became its own district. And so I think for an opportunity like this, Garfield County's not willing to do it. There probably aren't any other municipalities who are really willing to be a lead on this. I would be comfortable with us. I know we've got new staff, and I know this would be on our finance director. But I do think that Clear and GCE would really step up and manage the, like, the reporting and, you know, and just kind of give us, give our team the materials they need to submit. At least that's what I would ask of GCE and Clear, is that it makes it the minimalist burden on our staff as it could be. But I do think it's kind of this unique opportunity, and it'd be a bummer to, it won't come back. I don't think the federal government is currently looking to send out additional funds that work on energy or energy efficiency. So it'd be nice to be able to take advantage of these funds and put them to the great program that we do have. And I think we'd be very competitive being a lead for all of our, you know, fellow members of GCE, so.
Yeah, minor point of clarification and to build on what Jess had talked about is that it's not just for GCE program funds, it's actually for most likely direct rebate and incentives. So if you live in Eagle County, if you live in Pitkin County, you know, as a resident, you have access to up to seventy-five hundred dollars of incentives from Holy Cross, from the local programs that exist, from the rent funds. And we have a lot of Carbondale residents who don't have that equity of access. So part of the funding is really to troubleshoot in this same region, how can we receive, you know, the same level of incentives to do the good work to make our buildings better and more energy efficient? So what we would be, you know, we'd happy to answer questions on the side, but to just go with the guidelines of keep staff time to a minimum, we hear that loud and clear, absolutely. And to take a collaborative approach with all the GCE members, think about infrastructure, think about policy, throw a bunch of ideas on the table, and thankfully, some GCE members have stepped up to be on a subcommittee and to come back to you all with a proposal for an LOI before the deadline.
So, so the goal of this grant, okay, so there's both policy and project, those are two different buckets. Can you, well, I guess let's start distinguished policy from project. Is a project a hard shovel-in-the-ground project?
Or rebates and incentives.
Okay.
Dollars going out.
Okay.
Yep.
And policy is more like setting new codes or, or.
It's creating, the policy would be creating the program that allowed the homeowners to get that funding.
Okay. And then you, you were talking about the, the impact grant is sort of pushing towards a long-term sustainable funding. Is that, so that is envisioned as an exercise in looking at different taxation projects? Or what is the, are there other strategies to that? We just, I mean, we just talked, had a discussion just a second ago about how tiny the room seems to be there.
Oh, that, yeah, that's sales tax. I mean, there's trans, real estate transfer fees and things like that, whatever the right way to say it is, so it isn't called a tax.
Okay.
So.
So that's legal, I guess that's legal research or?
Yep, so we would basically need funds to bring in an expert, pull together stakeholders, a committee, and use that funding to launch what probably is a multi-year, you know, research initiative and stakeholder engagement to develop what, what would be options for funding streams. So it's supporting a, a long-term project development there.
My understanding was that the, the policy part of the grant would go toward that dedicated funding source research.
Yep, and it might be that a secondary policy piece that's very tangible and related to delivery of incentives or builds on something that one of the jurisdictions is already trying to move forward, you know, gets added into. It's really a very broad, broad opportunity, yep.
And so that, but the project at the end of the day, is that still a tangible project? Or is the search for more money the end project of this? Like, is there a actual rebate program? Is that attached to this, or is that something still to be determined or?
I think the development of what that mix looks like that meets the criteria is, is the work that the ad hoc committee would do. I think the development of what that mix looks like that meets the criteria is is the work that the ad hoc committee would do.
Before the grant is proposed or?
I think the letter of intent has to have like a loose idea of what your policy project is and what your project project is. And so that's the this subcommittee from G C E, which I will be a part of, is going to do with Clear and G C E guiding the conversation.
All right.
Grant that we talked about very briefly, very last minute, like got us submitted.
Oh, okay.
Next week. And so it's familiar, I think this, and it's unusual, right? That it's so broad and that there's this policy part and project part. But at least we we had that brief discussion and we said, we're not quite ready. So this would be us saying, okay, we're interested and we're gonna do it basically on behalf of G C E with G C E's.
Four different categories of, it's like land.
Transportation.
Transportation.
So Morgan Hill and our team is is a coach for this and is happy to answer a lot of, a lot of detailed questions about it. So we're looking at build, built environment.
Transportation and waste.
Yep.
Okay, so it would cover all of those at the end of the, potentially or?
Well, no, you could pick, your policy could be about transportation and your project could be about buildings or waste or they don't have to relate, they can. That's the interesting part about this grant is that your policy does not have to relate to the project at all, as long as it's one of those categories.
Cool. Well, I guess I would just like to keep these kept abreast of where that narrowing process lands, I guess. And presumably, we we have a, get somewhere where we've got a compelling thing that, you know, makes immediate logical sense. I don't want to have to have to not really understand what I'm, what we're going for at the end of the day.
Yeah, it sounds like if we're generally supportive of this, then the next step would be we'd we'd read some draft letter of intent, probably sometime in October, so that it could be submitted in November.
And if if I get to a point in this subcommittee where we have a meeting, I can fill you in on where I think it's gonna head before we see the draft.
Chris, I could be wrong, but I would think it's a more the merrier to the to these meetings. So if you have time and would like to represent Carbonell, maybe that's an option.
Yeah.
Yeah, as well. We want a lot of brain power in the room.
Okay.
And I would think.
Maybe just to send me an invite and I'll see if it works.
I think the only reasons to consider not doing this would be if we had a really just clear idea that we wanted to submit instead of this, that was just for the town of Carbonell. But we were kind of all over the place last time we talked about it. I don't like to be in the like chase grants just because they're there mindset. You know, I think we need to have a pretty clear strategy and then the other is staff capacity. And I I just think that needs to absolutely be part of the discussion. Because even the the promise of we're gonna give you the stuff and you're gonna submit it, like Ola is still gonna get pulled into that and it's gonna be some portal and he's gonna have to upload all these documents and do all the, you know, it's gonna be part of our audit, like it does become, grants do become burdensome to manage. Anybody who's managed grants knows that. So I just want to make sure that it's feasible.
Yeah, that's my biggest concern.
Maybe it's written into the grant that there's some extra money in it to help pay for somebody to do that for the, I don't know. But there will be.
That's reasonable.
Yeah, there, but there will be by our core staff, probably by Ryan and Ola, there will, there will be work, no matter what. Yeah, do we, I don't think we need to talk about that too much more unless it's like, yeah, go go forward and bring us back a draft.
I'm comfortable with that. I I just wanted a little refresher um on on the proposal that we said, I think it was actually a split decision here, but um that we said, no, we're not gonna apply apply early. Because there were two rounds, this one, there are two rounds of funding and it was unclear as to whether there was a benefit of getting in right away.
The second round.
Second, yeah, this is the second round at this point. But did we, I thought we had an other, we did have sort of another project that was being proposed or not so much.
Just mentioned the water meters.
Gotcha.
Because the amount was like pretty much the same.
And then Mayor, if I could chime in, we did, um your Public Works Director and I had looked at, uh and we're not the experts, but looked at the the criteria and that one did not feel like it would be kind of a winner in that process. It was really a stretch. And I think with the competitiveness and Lauren and I had a conversation, that was probably not gonna uh be something that was competitive.
These these all seem like valid environmental concerns and no need to pit one against the other, but just wanted to make sure we didn't have someone who was sort of counting on something or.
No, I think we were just sort of in the, let's not let the money go un, you know, unspent or, you know, uncompeted for. But it sounds like this might be a good, so it sounds like you have the board's support to move forward to bring us back a draft.
Great, thank you.
What else do we want to dive into?
I'll just um kind of go through this other stuff quickly, just the path to net zero for new construction. That's what we adopted. Great. Um I won't go over all that, but the, on the bottom of this slide, upcoming next year, there's gonna be a requirement to adopt new codes. However, because we just adopted this, we should be fine for a while. But that's something that's gonna be coming down the pike. So there's all, you know, just because we did it, did all that work, doesn't mean we're out of the woods forever.
But I think our hope, Jeff, was that, and tell us if this is accurate, our hope was that because we were kind of so far behind and they were all out of alignment, that now that we're all up to 2021 and they're all in alignment, that it'll be iterative and it won't feel like such a heavy lift every time.
Right, right, exactly. We won't be going so far and we won't be doing all the codes from 2009 and all that. So we're way ahead.
Okay.
Yeah, so this, I'm not gonna get into these tables, you've, they're in your packet, but the basically just updated the different paths to net zero for new construction and for um the existing buildings. So the existing buildings are kind of the the focus for Clear's work for the rest of the year and for next year. And it's really gonna cover building energy assessments, looking at residential, commercial and municipal buildings, still working on the, you know, the electrification of the existing buildings. Um the triggers are something we want to just talk about. In that path to net zero for existing buildings, we've talked about how do we catch, like we catch the existing buildings? What's the, what's the way to do the residents and the businesses? We know that the state has mandated all buildings over 50,000 square feet need to be benchmarked, which just means you enter your utility bills into a state database. And then what, we've lowered that number down to 25,000 square feet, because obviously we're not in that market of 50,000 square foot buildings. So what, how do we get the teeth, you know, it's carrot and stick kind of thing? How do we get people to actually make these improvements and not make it onerous on them? So that's kind of where we are and we'll be exploring that. Uh we don't have any recommendations necessarily at this point, but I think that's just to let you know what what's gonna be happening with Clear over the next months. You know, potential triggers are at a building, when you apply for a building permit for a certain dollar amount or a certain level of work, then you need to bring it up to a certain uh point. Sales, that could be an option. So we're looking at what's happening statewide and and throughout the country to figure out what those triggers are. And that seems to be, I mean, I think even though the building code part seemed hard, it wasn't really the easy part compared to this, going in and not impacting owners too much. Or renters, for example, or, you know, a lot of businesses don't own their buildings. So how do we, how do we get that to work? Yeah, and these are just the 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 tables in your packet, added a column for the 2025 update, what we're doing and hoping to do this year.
Great.
So just to, in summary about this path to net zero, they're just really guidelines to help the town meet its energy goals and climate goals. And we have this two separate paths and it's not an ordinance, as we realize, but it's really just this guideline. And it's really Clear's role to be the implementer of those roadmaps and and get that work done. But the question Lauren and I have been talking about is how does this live? You know, how do we know that, you know, when we get a new town manager and, you know, we have staff changes and new boards, how do people know this document exists? Is it a place on the website? Or, you know, I, we don't know what the answer to that one is, but I think that's, that's one of the questions. Some people might retire someday and that have been carrying this torch and, you know, then then who carries that? So anyway, that's gonna be, it's gonna be going on.
Yep, I may step in real quick.
Yeah.
So it would be really helpful to have a little bit more of a dialogue more frequently or with town staff and Ryan and I have talked a lot in the past two meetings that we have, which is just really helpful about, we have aspirational targets, but then if they don't have any teeth or mean anything, then we should focus on what does. And so part of putting this in the packet for you all is just some happy reading to mull over. There was a target that was to vacate new natural gas by 2030. So I think we have some very aspirational targets in here and at some point it would be really healthy to come back and have an honest conversation about what do we think is achievable? What do we want to do? And because, you know, it it makes a difference in where Clear spends our time and our money and I think where the town is headed. And tonight is not the time for that, but it's it's happy reading and we'd like to invite another conversation about that. And if the document needs to be modified, if certain targets needed, need to be changed, we'd, we'd love to hear that from you all as well.
Um another uh big area of work is um that you all directed Clear to work on was the efficiency fund development. Those are the fees that come from people not meeting the requirements or having, you know, heat tape and snowmelt driveways and that sort of thing. It's always been pretty loose. I think there's about $80,000 maybe in the fund now, but there's no clear guidelines about how to spend that money and how to distribute it. So wanna work with staff closely to kind of create that policy. And that would be, I think, Kevin, Aaron and others who who would be involved in that. So.
I I would actually solicit feedback right now from that, because we are, now that Ryan's on board and the dust has settled from codes, we really need to get these guidelines back to you all before the end of the year. It's a small fund, but we wanna have a direction. So if anyone has had thoughts about what they don't wanna see in that fund, what they would like to prioritize, it would be helpful to know and we can also converse through Ryan about this too.
That's just a really good clarifying question before we weigh in, about what does it generate every year? Like how much is coming in?
It's really small.
That's why I want to be careful how like, we're about to throw out all of our ideas about how to use that, but if we're talking about like $8,000, right? I don't know.
Yeah, it's.
Because if it's got 80 in there and we've. Fifteen, nineteen.
$1,000 a year, we just, it's it's referred to in code, in the code adoption, this fund. And there's no document about it. So we're just need to put together a simple document about this fund.
But it's a small amount.
Small amount, thank you.
Okay, go ahead.
I think um uh one thing we're hearing from local businesses, like the prior presentations, is just the, and I think we should just acknowledge, like, um and this is so if we could put the funds towards, I mean, residential is great, but if there is some funds towards commercial, even on the putting funding towards the benchmarking or incentives towards the benchmarking or something, you know, that help us achieve some of our other goals, but just acknowledging that um it seems easy and I have worked with businesses. I'm trying to get them to enter their own energy bills and then I just entered them in my past life. And now as a business owner, the idea of enter finding, grabbing that, those files somewhere and although we don't have energy bills, we're off the grid. But anyway, um, you know, having one more thing that you have to do when you're managing and you're a small business and you're managing everything else can actually feel kind of overwhelming. So whatever, just putting that out there, that's to make sure that we're making it easier and not um another kind of burden on a, on a local business would be awesome.
It sounds like a good idea. Other thoughts?
I just, I really want to be careful about um creating more requirements or more processes that businesses have to go to, go through or residents have to go through to get anywhere through the building department right now. Like I, I think it's a, I think we need to be really careful with these guidelines. I think we need to be careful with asking staff to do anything other than permitting and inspections right now until we have another staff member or like, all I hear about is how long this is taking. And to see that like a mechanical permit is gonna take six to eight weeks. And then we're talking about these re-op programs, like people can't even get their mechanical permits to open their businesses. And so I just want to be careful about how we talk about this conversation right now when the big conver, the big picture right now is that we're putting undue burden on businesses and residents based on our processes.
So maybe this could wait until we get some of that done. I mean, the money's been sitting there for 10 years. It could sit there for a little while longer, but it sounds like when, when there is time to have that conversation, so far we've heard an idea about using it to help businesses get through some requirements and meet our goals.
Yeah, um what Jess said is right on point. So I think this is a, we're 30,000 fee. We've always talked about how do we encourage people to do this? And um it's gonna take resources. So you mentioned rebates. And if you live in the Upper Valley and you're part of Holy Cross, you have access to resources that we don't, as Excel customers don't have. Be really interesting to know what exactly does Holy Cross offer. There are some residents in Carbonell who can take advantage of that. It'd be great to lift the level so people know what's going on. And then it would also help us figure out what kind of money are we talking about? To help businesses, existing, existing residents to make that leap. We, Excel's been pushed on on bill financing for a number of years. I don't know if it's ever gonna happen. It might. And but it'd be great to know, what what are we talking about? Is it $8 million? Is it 100,000? Is it a revolving loan fund or are ways that we could help them finance it with a low interest loan? We have a revolving loan fund that actually isn't being used. Could we use it for some of these upgrades? I don't know. But I'd love to see ways to, what are the best practices that are happening? How could we do something knowing that our utility is not the most progressive in the world?
So just a point of clarification, so the the efficiency fund, really, we're just trying to get a really quick process that if the town wanted to get the money out to applicants who are coming in for permit or some other way, that there's a form to fill out, that there's some type of guideline on that form. The efficiency fund itself obviously isn't making any new guidelines. Do, just so I have some clear direction to go back, would you like us to put together the form and a draft, like application for use of funds or po, put pause on that?
What, what are the funds?
They're just, it's funds that have been collected from fees that were intended to go like out to the community. It could set.
Old.
Okay.
I mean, we have much bigger.
So I, I actually kind of like if a business can use those funds, why, why hold them? If businesses need funds to permit and do.
Well, they can't even get a permit.
I know, but. I mean, some of that is because of economic reasons, you know? I I don't know. I think if there's money out there and it's available, why hold it again? When you can, if she's offering to make an application and people could apply for it, why not?
I mean, we could ask Clear to also administer this as a rebate program. And it could be where we um allocate, right now, the reserve in it is 80,000. If we get 15 grand a year and we say, let's allocate 20,000 for rebates next year and Clear administers those, like we, that is an allowable use of those funds. Those funds could also be used on our own buildings, our own renewable projects or something like that. So there's nothing in the language for those that says like it has to be, you know, distributed via the building department or anything like that. I think that just came up when the language was included in the building codes. And then we were like, no, we don't want it as part of our building code language. But I do think we have a couple of options where it doesn't really involve the building department. It's like a normal rebate program where they show that they've installed this piece of equipment and then Clear can give a rebate on that item or whatever it might be. Or I've done the benchmarking that's required in the code, uh or not required in the code, but that's on our path to net zero and recommended and here's a reimbursement grant for that or something. So we could make it simpler that way and then it's outside of our um, of our, our staff. And we're taking advantage of our contract with Clear and they administer all kinds of rebate programs for like City of Glenwood and stuff like that. So there's, there's other options.
It sounds like there's interest, though, in focusing on commercial. Can we, is that an agreement? Like that we've heard a lot about how do we support businesses? How do we support them in getting more towards some of these things? Is that the level of feedback? Like, I don't want to design this rebate program right now. So if we say parcel it out, rebate program, not involving the business, building department at all, and go toward commercial businesses meeting. and go toward commercial businesses meeting some of our requirements and reducing their costs, that seems like it'd be a good step in the right direction.
And it can always be changed in a year or two, once things settle out, when Ryan's got everything coming.
Given the tenor of today's meeting and things that have come up in in various topics on the agenda, like that's, I think it's appropriate and makes sense to me.
Yeah, I guess I mainly agree with Jess. I don't know if I feel like there's a time crunch necessarily for us to, like I kind of would rather not hurry through it if we make something shoddy and hopefully have a little bit of iteration maybe of what it looks like. I do think that, yeah, we've already talked about this. I think the fundamental question right now is that we seem to have like a sort of loss of public trust in our building department and I I think we need to get that situation sorted out a little bit more. And I don't, I don't know what, I'm not on the inside, so I don't really know what, can't speculate on what that might be, but I I don't know if there's also sort of training and bedside manner for our employees about, you know, a difficult process can be made a lot easier if you're dealing with somebody who is willing to really take your hand and be, you know, help you solve the problem. And I have gotten sort of the impression that we don't necessarily always have that kind of, you know, loving hands at home approach to people that they just like to these days and um.
Okay, I just wanna keep us focused on this agenda item. You're right, there's a lot of work to do there.
Well, but no, I think that, I'm just saying, I think that that's kind of prerequisite is like trying to have the staffing and have that department feel functional and efficient before we try to throw more things that are gonna be potentially conjuncting into their their work schedule and stuff, I guess, so.
I guess my concern is like, I don't wanna just do commercial because I think this would have a fifteen hundred dollar rebate is gonna have a huge impact on a resident who's putting in a new furnace and isn't gonna have, I mean, it's important, but it's not gonna have as big of an impact on a commercial project doing a hundred thousand dollar hood. And so I don't wanna just say like, yeah, take the fifteen and put it towards commercial when we could maybe have a bigger impact if we take the time to do this. So I I'm open to maybe, maybe you can come up with a draft that says like, these four things are residential rebates that we can offer and these two things are commercial things that we can offer and we've got fifteen thousand dollars for twenty twenty six and it's that simple. And it has nothing to do with our town staff.
And yeah, maybe it is just like we identify those six things and then it is sort of a matter of clear discretion about which projects seem to actually be an effective intervention, you know, you know, in the moment.
We got bigger problems.
Okay. Yeah, I mean, clearly we're not really this is a level of detail though, Lauren, like it's, it's hard for a board to get into this level of detail and design a program on the fly like this. So I think we're trying to say, it could be residential, it could be commercial, we don't really know. We rely on Clear's expertise to come back to us and say, here's what we recommend.
And that's all we need is to say, go forth and come back with something or press pause like for the rest of the year.
Clear is facilitating the rebates.
Yes, not the not the town.
That's clear.
Thank you.
Pay no attention to the rebates behind the curtain. Um, just, I mean, the last thing is just, uh, the additional work that Clear is working on this this year, right?
So I submitted that in the packet again as really material so that you all have the information you need to come back to us with questions. Tonight is not a full update or anything, but we really just wanted to have a chance to communicate with you guys and present some material. And so a lot of that's in the packet. While I'm here, I wanted to give a really quick shout out to the Carbonell Police Department. They have been very participatory in every event that we have had. The children have loved them. Um, and they've really, it's just been great. They've they've showed up at at almost everything and it makes our programs more successful to see the town and the kids, the kids particularly love the police, so. When I say that, impacts are a huge success. Um, if you all have any questions about AEM, about any of the grants that are being applied for um direct pay, just kind of flagging this and the work plan, Ryan and I are gonna start to work on this. Um, this is something that I wanted to to bring up, that direct pay might still be an option for the town to receive a quite a lot of funds um back for micro hydro and apparently it's flowing. So um the time might be now to start to take that seriously and just wanted to to let you know that we're gonna, now that we have a new town manager, get going on potentially an application and we'll come back with you.
Okay, yeah.
I just have one thing to kind of maybe add to your future work plan is I know sometimes there's different meetings that happen regionally and it might have sustainability staff from Eagle County um, or our Up Valley Partners and we don't have a sustainability staff person. And so um I want, I think it'd be great if we could kind of empower Clear to attend that meeting and be able to bill it to our contract or something, whatever it might be. It's kind of hypothetical, but just I don't, I wouldn't want us to miss out on being able to chime in on something that maybe one of us can't attend and it might not make sense for Ryan to go to, but if um, you know, Clear would wanna go and represent us and be there as like, I'm representing the town of Carbondale, I can take this feedback back to them or confer with Ryan. Um, I think it'd be great to have kind of a component of the contract there, so that way we know uh, cause I really do see Clear as our sustainability staff team. But would wanna make sure that you guys feel like you have the funds to, or like the line item to kind of build that too, whatever it might be. So, it's a slush fund lead item.
No, and that's real. I mean, I was at a meeting last week or last month and every town had their sustainability person there and and I was there and Aaron was there, but I think that'd be a great idea.
Yeah, that'd be great to put in the work plan for next year. Okay.
That's all. Thank you. Thank you all so much.
All right, thank you.
Have a good night.
Uh, let's take a five minute break and then we'll come back and hear about waste hauling and public works and utilities budgets.
Do you remember? What a nightmare. And then the miracle of T nine and whatever. It was some predictive thing where it would. They were at.
Haven't seen him.
Exchange about what?
Well, we were trying to uh borrow his house in Chalk for a family graduation kind of event, which we're figuring out, but he's just so funny, like he couldn't have a normal.
Just go over to Smithy on Wednesday and chat with him.
Is he there every Wednesday?
I think he's usually there in the morning at seven thirty or something.
And what's, what's the occasion for that? Why?
HP's there and they're just chewing fat usually. Yeah, I think they're there most weeks. Just there's a table of old codgers on that comes in.
That's a great idea.
I can't guarantee you.
I don't know if I can now they're alive, this guy's had a chance to lay.
Yeah, they love some bullshit, but you could take it, I know. It's all, it's all just, uh, you know, the Jersey. I don't know, is he that much older than?
They're probably some. But are they like, uh, it's late seventies?
Yeah, seventies.
That sound right?
I think that's right, yeah, mid, mid to late seventies.
Didn't know there was the old codger summit and.
I think it's pretty regular.
Something to aspire to.
I feel like almost every day there's a different, some sort of different grouping of you know, like Art Ackerman had his, what was it? The Poets? Piss on everything tomorrow was Saturday. That was his club, which was on Friday mornings at Smithy. And then obviously there's the Saturday morning Lefty's Summit with uh, with Fred Malo and uh and uh oh god, dry blank.
Too crowded to drive Saturday.
Richard Botero and and uh and uh Ron Hough or Ron Hough. Yeah. Oh, good. Yeah, I'll keep yelling at you. Anyway, yeah. Oh, how's she doing?
I haven't seen her way too long.
Oh, man. Yeah, she seems just up to her eyeballs in toddlers, basically. Yeah, she's, I think she's working hard for Western Resource Advocates still. You do know about that, right? Yeah, 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 that's been a while. Yeah, it's been a while. And I think she still has Yeah, they're, the kids are, sound like a handful and they had a whole, yeah, they had a.
Okay, we have one probably pretty quick and easy item, the waste hauling rate increase request. Um, so we can start there and then I think that the utilities and public works budget will require a good discussion. So let's start with the waste hauling.
Okay, can clear out a room, can't we?
Eight twenty.
The waste hauling is pretty straightforward, in my opinion. The CPIU, which we're contractually obligated to honor when it's in this range was three point two percent in August. That's what Mountain Waste proposed to raise their rates and that's what we adjusted the fee schedule that's in the packet.
Any questions on that one? There is a motion that we need on page three of that memo.
I'll move to approve, move to adopt resolution number seven, series of twenty twenty five updating appendix A of the municipal code with waste hauling rates becoming effective October first, twenty twenty five.
Second.
Chris, second by Jess. Any questions before we vote? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes unanimously. Thank you. Hey, now let's dive into this budget. I gotta say, this is the first time I've seen twenty five year anything ever in a budget and it's impressive to be thinking that far out. Don't worry, we won't be here twenty five years from now to hold you to it, but it's uh, I think it's actually just fascinating to see how much advanced planning is required in a, in a utilities department.
Well, I'll start with saying thank you to all, to you all for recommending that we do a master plan next year. That's what triggered it all. So started thinking about how to accomplish it and it'll build a framework for the master plan and that's where it all came from. So that's where we're at.
Right.
That's where it all came from after that. We'll dive in real quick. Um, we've put a bubble slide together for you.
And the, just to frame this up like we've done with the other ones that tonight, the goal here, my understanding, and correct me if I'm wrong, is just so that we have a firm understanding when we see the first draft of the budget, why things are as they are, what the big projects are, that sort of thing. And so this is our opportunity to dig in, discuss those or say, okay, looks good. And I would say out of the, all the departments whose budgets we oversee, like the utilities part is the one where there's the least discretion on our part and we could decide not to invest in something, but it's the one where I'm the most inclined to say, this isn't like board priorities. This is what do we need to do to have a reliable water and wastewater system and trust the expertise of our staff and everybody works on that. Um, so, but then in public works, there is more discretion, right? Do we wanna build a crossing over here? Do we wanna do something else over there? So um, yeah, with that, let's, let's dive in.
Excellent. So you're absolutely right. And I'll make my typical pitch that the reason you can have other priorities is because water and wastewater tend to work well because toilets don't flush and we don't have clean water. You won't be talking about a lot other than that. So, um, you know, the first couple slides in this PowerPoint is um are related more to the streets, arborists, um the ones where Ben just talked about having a little more discretion. You know, the, the things I really wanted to hit on, the, these are gonna be like bigger ticket items that you'll see dollar amounts for in the budget when you actually see numbers. The tactical urbanism I threw in there because I did include fifty thousand dollars in the budget for next year, not for a project, but to buy materials to try different things in that kind of second year. One of the things that the Bike Ped Commission was really interested in trying was some temporary raised crosswalks in certain areas. And they do make those, but they're fairly expensive. So the majority of that cost is getting a couple of those, being able to deploy them in different areas to see people's reaction to them as well as just update some of our um devices that we use this year. The tree inventory is a priority of both the town arborist and the tree board. It's been a number of years, ten to fifteen years since we've updated that. Um, in total, spread throughout the parks and uh streets, public works budgets. That's about a thirty five thousand dollar spend, but I think it's worthwhile because it really helps Carl do his thing and it also helps, it it was, even the old one was really helpful when we had to address Emerald Ash Borer right off the bat and know how many ash trees we had approximately in town. Um, the big spend you see up there is the Highway one thirty three crossing, Ped Crossing at Went. Um, that is currently under design. Our intent would be to go out for bid early next year, January, February timeframe. But the construction is going to need to be constrained to outside of school hours because if we have to we're not far along enough to know yet, but if we have to do any sort of detouring, we can't do that, being right there by Ross plus right there by Snow Mass, so that's what we're looking at. Um, the normal stuff we do, chip ceiling, crack ceiling, striping and then just sticking with our fleet replacement schedule, which includes a pickup truck, a gator and the new mower. What we had, okay. Um, this is just kind of a breakdown of the personnel and operating expenses in the motor pool, streets, general fund um portion. And then our public works admin that you've probably not seen in the budget, but it's there. So, um, just to kind of give a perspective on you know, where do we at personnel versus operating? And I think it actually makes a lot of sense, you know, streets um, is a more balanced between personnel and operating. But that's because we need personnel to do the things that we need to do. So, uh with that, we'll move over to bubbles.
Can we, may, let's pause there, cause I do see a big split. Like I think that once we get into water and wastewater, let's stay there, but um, questions about the the capital, I mean, this is, this is kind of our capital improvement plan for the year, right? Like, these are our public works major projects.
So in sticking with the theme of not, you know, respecting the fact that Ryan's new, all us new, and we're just gonna kind of maintain what we're doing for this year. Most of the things you see on here were either mentioned as priorities of the board and can and included in the capital plan, that five year capital plan that was in last year's budget. With the exception of the fifty thousand dollars for the tactical urbanism.
Okay. Uh, any questions about any of these or any big project you expected to see that there wasn't? You know, this past year we put the crossing in there kind of late and said, go, go fast.
Um, is there possible to have an update about Roundabout? And where we are in the ongoing process and um, I'm just wondering um, like where we are in that process. Are we approved by C dot? Do we need to go out to bid or, or any thoughts you have?
So where we're at with the Roundabout project is honestly about where we were last year. We have not moved forward on that and that may be because I missed. We have not moved forward on that, and that may be because I misjudged something, but I got the sense from the board that the priorities had kind of shifted towards these pedestrian crossings and away from the Roundabout. We have a preliminary layout approved. We know what right of way we need, and that's kind of where we're sitting.
Okay. Uh, I mean, I think it'd be really valuable for us to know what's it going to take to get the easements, what's it going to cost us? Um, what generally would it cost to build the Roundabout? Um. And maybe we could have a discussion of do we want to go forward with that or not? Um, I'm just wondering because we're potentially contemplating a question in November. And it'd be great to have those numbers and whether we include the Roundabout in it or not. I don't, I don't, we haven't had been able to have those conversations, but as much as you can share with us, I think that'd be really appreciated, just so we know. Oh, this is a ten million dollar project. And it's going to take us five years to pull off.
It's probably with the way construction's escalating at this point, a six million dollar project, I would say. And if we were to go ahead with it, I would say we could probably be ready for bidding it out in two years. And you brought up a good point. The other point of kind of putting the brakes on that was having this more global discussion of what we're going to do with capital needs, and that's going to be a piece of it, but not all of it because there's a lot of other things that have been identified through map carbon Dale. The discussion we had last January with the map on the wall. You know, those should all probably play into that decision making and um kind of inform the ask if one is made.
So potentially, there could be an ask in twenty twenty six. It's all hypothetical, not saying we're doing this. With, but we still wouldn't be able implement it in twenty twenty seven, would we? Would it be ready? You just said two years.
If I was given the direction to move forward on it, we could get it to the level of having plans, but you know, I I think a lot of the discussion on those big ticket items is are we going to be able to fund that ourselves? Are we going to have to bond for it? Are we going to try to get grants for it, which looks less likely these days? So um, that's kind of where we were at. I'm.
Okay. No, that's very helpful. Thank you.
Chris.
Um, I don't think you were at all mistaken in our opinion last year that that I that the Roundabout was not, you know, the highest priority. And I still don't think it's highest. I think you're still right that the, for me, the crossing at Went um or at, yeah, Ross around there is still a higher priority um in the near term. But two years feels like kind of a long time and does feel like maybe we will be ready by then, depending on how much more development gets completed on the marketplace side of the highway. Um, so it doesn't seem too crazy to me for us to try to lot lay out, try to get our ducks in a row in terms of the soft side of the equation, basically. Um, I don't know that we have to like crack the whip, but like I I do think it would be good for us to see, just try to chip away at the the different parts of it, which is, yeah, the right of way identification and acquisition, and then the refining of the design, which will also refine the cost question way more. So I think those are worth worthwhile exercise. I, my opinion is that the Roundabout is sort of inevitable at some point, so I don't think it's wasted money to go through the exercise of doing the design. I can't really imagine how it would change, you know, and I think it it does solve other questions at Dolores to a not perfectly satisfying degree, but definitely making a right hand turn out of there and coming around that Roundabout doesn't, it's not, that's not the end of the world. So I I would like to see some progress on it, but I don't need to go charging and crazy at it, but I think the soft stuff, you know, be nice to.
And that's kind of what we've done in the past. I mean, I know there's been years, over the past few years, where we've dedicated funding to do certain levels of design and things like that. Um, so it sounds like there's interest in continuing to move that forward, but also understanding that there's going to have to be some influx influx of funding to make it happen. Um, and that it's going to be one part of a bigger capital improvement plan with probably a question to the voters or some other source of magical funding.
We we can continue to work on the design, um, knowing what the right of way needs are and that the majority of them are coming from the one remaining vacant lot in the marketplace development. Um, that information has been shared with the owner of that lot. Um, to help with the potential, if anything develops there of going, make sure you take this into consideration, but we could talk, I suppose, in greater detail about actually acquiring it, too.
Any other kind of big items that you want to talk about that are in this so far that aren't?
I'll I'll just, you know, be another booster for for the tactical urbanism. And again, not to not to uh build our budget fifty thousand dollars at a time, but if if another fifty thousand dollars there is enough to make a big difference in in doing twice as much or getting a little bit more info, um, I think it was, I think that was a real resounding success this year. Um, and if there's some things that need that could be made semi-permanent or that we can actually uh implement some of that, um, I think that that's kind of low hanging fruit. Um, and 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 I would like to like to see, I don't, I don't, I I wouldn't say make that a smaller line item just because that's where we, that's where the dial ended up this year. I mean, if if that was great, then, you know, another fifty thousand dollars or something, you know, about that, I wouldn't have any problem with.
Can you just tell us kind of what the next steps look like? I mean, because my understanding might be wrong, but my understanding was we were going to put all this temporary stuff out there, gather a bunch of feedback, and then come back with a project plan of like, we're taking these out permanently, we're putting these in permanently, and maybe we're leaving some of the temporary stuff in. But what what is the future of those?
In in, or you're right, but I think that the timeframe in which that happens may have seemed like quicker than it is. I mean, we're still collecting data through these that Bike Ped's gonna look at. You know, all the comments we receive, I I I don't think that the intent was ever to do the tactical urbanism out there this year and build a project next year.
Thought it was.
I I think that there's potentially some things we can do if it if the data plays out. For example, if we wanted to stripe bike lanes on Hendrick because that's a real popular thing, that's a low cost, easy thing to get accomplished. I don't think what you would see is based on the feedback that I've seen, I don't think you're going to see a recommendation of yeah, what you got out there, make it out of concrete. That's just not the sense I'm getting. There's people that are happy with certain aspects of it and unhappy with other aspects. So I I do think that there's things we could do, but I don't think that it's going to be a concrete and asphalt infrastructure project next year.
Okay.
And then wi- with the tactical urbanism, the Bike Ped Commission's been working on other areas in town where we try maybe similar things, maybe different things. Like I mentioned, the speed tables, um, might try some chicanes on some roads, which we really haven't tried yet. So.
What's a chicane?
Basically weaving the road back and forth, keeping it narrow, but making.
You've been down that road in Willets? That's like the park road that, yeah.
And there's one on Hendrick, right? I mean, when you, it's just on Hendrick, and it seems like there with the tactical urbanism stuff, there's sort of a lane shift that happens.
That was a function of those, e- either the Roundabout and or that median concept that we tried, but they weren't like intentional.
Okay.
Kind of.
Cemetery of Murder in Aspen is also a great example of that. That was a straightaway, and they put a couple of those in there and that, and and some speed tables, but that definitely.
Well, to stay focused on the budget, and it's eight thirty seven. Um, can we move? Sounds like keep going in this direction and let's hear about water.
Another question, and this came up based on some conversations we had related to uh Chaco's Park. Um. Restrooms in our public parks. My understanding, that's a Parks and Rec prior or uh uh budget item, and it's their responsibility. And I I kind of wonder if we need to think about it differently and have that be a public works thing. Just food for thought. It it's a public utility. That's what you guys do. As opposed to our Parks and Recs, and we haven't been able to move some of these projects forward, partially because they're construction projects, and that's not necessarily what Parks and Recs does. Um, so I just wonder if there's an opportunity to expedite some of these projects, given all the work that Parks and Rec already does and the stuff they're going to be doing when this new pool opens. And I don't know if there's been any internal discussions about whether that's even wise or possible, but it just seems like we really need to do some work with our uh restrooms and potentially create one next to Chaco's Park at the launch pad. So I don't know, just throwing that out as a possibility to move some of these projects forward. And I know there's a money question with all this kind of stuff.
The only thing I'll throw out is while it may seem more like a utility function, are utilities functioning in a production, treatment, and conveyance capacity, not how do you get it out of a human body and into our system? But and I I I'm just being honest. It's not that we can't work with the Parks and Rec Department and help them manage some of the projects and, you know, but Scott and I don't design buildings. We don't, those sorts of things that are ancillary and, you know, interior plumbing, so.
Totally get it. I mean, and you guys do a great job, and that's why I'm bringing this up, because you guys do a great job. And I just want to see a way for us to move some of these ideas forward. I think we need them to be clean, right? Then we need them to be safe. And and then we need them to be built or get rid of the old one and plop another one down because they do make modular bathrooms.
Yeah, that seems to be pretty straightforward.
Yeah, so um, I was just encouraged staff to think about, are there ways we could expedite getting some repair to our restrooms in our public parks? Because we want all these people to come to Carbon Dale, and it sucks that they have to find a place on their own in a restaurant near the bathroom, and they can't just go to a public one.
Hey, I think one of the things um that I saw that was helpful, uh, you made that crossing a priority. And I think that helps staff as well when we're managing multiple things. So if restrooms in the parks become a trusty priority when we're talking about that budget uh with that staff, then that's helpful in driving that. And to Kevin's point, and we can, we can collaborate on how that gets accomplished, but um, we'll pause bathrooms for that, uh, that budget conversation, but good placeholder.
Okay.
Let's move on to water wastewater.
No, sorry, one more thing. I just think uh, I just think we, I just quickly, I just think the the like tactical urbanism also, I mean, it can happen, but I don't think we have to like put out fifty thousand plastic sticks everywhere right away. Like, I think we can move it around a little bit. Also, I don't want us to buy a bazillion pieces of plastic for this project. Okay, now you're gone.
Let's move on.
All right, moving on. To your earlier point, Ben, that we'll focus this on what are the big picture, big ticket items that we're planning for next year? Um, the rest of this presentation uh sort of gets into really where the budget's going, um, where the, where our long range outlook looks like. So we'll have some kind of big picture discussion that I'd like to have there. Um, but first, capital expenses. Um, per your instruction, we're going to jump into that master plan next year. Um, we are going to follow the capital plan. You've got a lot of uh detail that we laid out in the memo, so feel free to look through that. Feel free to interrupt and ask any questions about any of those things that if you want. Um, but this long range capital plan provides a framework to build the master plan. So that's, that's what we're going to focus on, figure out how we're going to optimize water rights, think about our ditches, secure our operations for water and wastewater in this community for the next fifty years. So it's kind of a plan. So that's that. Uh, the next one is modernization. Uh, as you might know, most of our operation is still done on paper. We're going to fix that. So um, we're making some progress on it already, but we're going to continue that and continue to focus on it. Um, capital purchase of a camera van replacement, it's a fairly large purchase. Uh, we have budgeted three hundred fifty thousand dollars for that. Um, the camera van specifically for wastewater is used uh in the sewer system for inspections, finding problems, um, things like that. And uh, the current van was built in nineteen ninety eight. It's had some upgrades over the time, but it's time to move on. Uh, this one's been on the docket, I think, for many years, the screw press procurement. Um, maybe scratch the procurement out of that. I think we've, wh- what we're going to plan on that is uh, move that project to like a sixty percent design, basically tee it up so we can try to attract some grant funding. Um, move it to the maximum progression where that's viable. Um, hopefully, by the end of the year, we can execute some procurement for the long, there's some long lead time items. There's some stuff that's uh expected to take almost a year to get. So we want to move that forward. The last one, last major uh expenditure is we're going to move to the second phase of our plant aeration and control project. Um, this photo is showing uh our new main blower, and that's going to allow us to have better control on the plant. We already have some better control, but we're going to move to the next one, next phase where we can continue to ramp down our energy consumption and get better air control. That will also inform our nutrient loading, which is coming, and we just found out um, this week that state regulator has moved the nutrient regulations forward, but they pushed them back a little bit. So uh, we do expect some some more stringent regulations coming in twenty thirty or twenty thirty three is the new schedule. So we need to plan for that, and that's what this final project does. So we'll we'll move that aeration project forward. Um, it'll probably be partially this year, partially next year to get that done, or sorry, twenty twenty six and twenty twenty seven.
But is that plant aeration? Is that in the wastewater?
Yes, this is all wastewater. Yep.
Scott, is this a natural gas or an electric?
It's electric.
Electric.
A hundred and fifty horsepower motor driving a big blower. Imagine a giant air compressor.
And and just out of curiosity, has Holy Cross been helpful in any of this this kind of work? It seems to be really large.
Um, we have not engaged Holy Cross on any aspect of this. Uh, it's a direct replacement, so it it replaced a a blower that failed last year.
Okay.
Uh, this just has some upgraded and more modern technology. We're able to actually control the motor, whereas um.
You can throttle it, right?
The the old one, yeah, we can throttle it. The old one is just wide open throttle all the time.
Yeah, I think you mentioned on our tour.
Any other questions on those? All right, this is the water capital expenses. Um, again, master plan, I won't repeat that. Same same thing, following the plan. And modernization, we're going to keep focusing on that. We've got a handful of tank and uh pressure reducing valve maintenance tasks to do. We did a full tank inspection of all eleven tanks that we operate in the system. Came back with just a handful of, you know, corrosion control, spot repair, things like that. Um, I don't remember have the exact number right in front of me, but I guess I do, actually. It's a hundred? Hundred and sixty thousand dollars total for those. That's what we're expecting. Um, you already know about the water metering AMI system. We're currently assuming that we're will continue with uh our own deployment, using our own staff. Uh, essentially at the fastest rate that we can get this done, we're expecting about three hundred and seventy five thousand dollars of new meters deployed this year. Uh, we are continuing to search for grant opportunities. Um, have not located something that's applicable yet. The impact accelerator sounded good, and then sounds like Kevin and Ryan got into it, and I think we're pulling back from that one. So uh, well, if you all find anything, feel free to send it my way. Yeah, let me know. Let me know what you find. Um, and then these last two items are, these are our priorities. This is our big ticket stuff. Um, as I've mentioned to you all before, we really need to drive to um a more resilient system as we learned from this past year when we had a PRV fail. Uh, and Nettle Creek was brought down to a hundred gallons per minute from typically four hundred and fifty. And we. And we could not meet demand for a little bit. Thankfully, the community responded, right? Like, worked out, we got through it. Um, but that's a place we need to improve, so we need more capacity. Um, on top of that, our current three wells at the Roaring Fork Well Field um have all shown signs, signs of failure. Well, one is now replaced, pump test went great, now we just gotta get it into that wellhouse. So we're working on that aspect. Next year, we will plan on well two replacement. Um, and then the treatment plant, as we've mentioned before, we're gonna pull out the um antiquated membrane filters. And install um and then another set of the more simplified cartridge filter system. And modernize our control and programming, so. Um, we just got bids back on that, bids ranged from nine hundred thousand to one point five. We're currently going through a value engineering exercise to try to drive that back down. So, oh, it came in. Solid forty percent over expectation.
Cartridge filter thing?
For the cartridge filters.
And we already, you said we, we, when we toured, there were two already in place, right?
There's one set which contains two.
And we're gonna put two more sets in or?
One more set to start. And the cool thing about the project is it preps the rest of the plant to continue to accept two more sets. For a total full build out that will manage all the capacity that the town needs in, in the future. Again, kind of the fifty year plan. Any other questions on that one? Trying to move through it quick without sounding crazy.
No, this is great.
All right, um, so this is getting into the bigger kind of just overall budget picture. As Kevin kind of showed with Public Works, we're doing the same thing with here with uh utilities, just our projected revenue. From, for wastewater and water, um, you know, two point two, two point four respectively. The key takeaway here is our operational uh expenses for both of these funds are between seventy and eighty percent of our total revenue. It doesn't leave a lot of space for capital improvements, of which we are, we are due for some. Um, so we're spending down the reserve. That's really what this slide shows us. Um, we still have reserve. Um, but we need to be thinking about that. Goes into this budget planning. Um, as you can see, so we have the lines trending upwards are our projected operational costs, that's. Using current CPI inflation, general cost of living increases for staff. And the real driver of those operational costs is our insurance rates. So those are increasing at the greatest rate.
You mean our health insurance for our staff? Okay.
So then. The other lines here are our projected reserve and. Don't pay too close of attention to the big drop offs. What you, I want you to look at is just the trend. We're going down. Um, to accomplish that huge packet of information I gave you. Uh, when we built this thing, we spread this out over twenty five years. It's part of the reason why it goes all the way out to twenty fifty. To try to figure out, how do we get this done at a pace that we can accomplish? And a spend that we can accomplish, and we still can't keep up. So why can't we keep up? In the past five years, personnel expenses have increased by seventy seven percent. Construction costs have doubled. And I would even argue that the only reasons it's only doubled is because we have. A favored contractor that has been knocking out projects for us left and right. And beats all the other contractors that bid by twenty five to fifty percent, so. If we lose that or we have a project that's outside of his scope, I, I think construction costs will be even more than double. And so we need to be prepared for that. In that same time, rates have increased by thirty five percent. I don't like raising rates on anybody, but we're not keeping up. Any questions on this one? Oh, no, we're stopped for questions.
When we, we, we were on a schedule of raising water rates. Like every five years or whether it was a five year plan and we just, we just stopped it, was it two years ago?
I think we've been doing it every year. I mean, we're trying to remember.
We've been doing it every year originally. It was, the plan wasn't to stop raising rates, but it, we thought it would moderate. I could not have, and I'm the one that proposed that plan. There is no way I could have sat here. Back in two thousand eighteen and said, you know, I'm thinking between twenty twenty and twenty twenty five, we'll probably. Have our personnel costs increase by seventy seven percent and I'm sure construction's gonna more than double because that just was not. What was happening at the time. Now we have kind of that look back that informs. What we're doing and, you know, that. There's a little error on this slide, we'll get to this. I think we need to be proactive on what we're doing. To avoid a monumental jump in the future. Um, and and we'll get into that in just a minute, but. You know, part of the mass or the master plan is gonna inform a rate study. As will all the data we're getting from the new meters. That's gonna be the ultimate place to take this with a long range plan. Understanding where we're at with construction and personnel. I, I, I think that's what's going to inform a longer term vision of what our rates are gonna look like. But I do think we should do something in the meantime.
Which is where we're going. I kind of already hit on some of this, but just to reiterate. The reason we have kind of a heavy capital plan here is our water resiliency. Here's some actual numbers for you to look at. Um, our summer demand, we peaked at around one point eight MGD this year. An interesting pe- piece to note based off of our conversation from early, is that earlier this year or was that last year, earlier this year? Was that in twenty fifteen, we peaked at two point oh MGD. So we've actually reduced overall peak, which is great. Um.
That's, I just wanna put a pin in that, like when. You hear from people, questions about carrying capacity and development and how are we gonna have enough water, it's fascinating that as our. Population has trended up, our water use has trended down, and that's been a pretty consistent trend as long as I've been sitting here. It does, it's all that, right? And it, and it's a reminder that it's not people flushing toilets and stuff that uses water, it's watering lawns. And so higher density development, the direction we're going with infill, all those things are actually really helpful for this and. I, I just think that that's an incredible statistic.
Yeah, which is why I included it here. I thought you might um enjoy that. I think one of the other keys here just to look at is. This year, Nettle Creek was down on production all year, we, we just didn't have the water. So I think we need to be. Be preparing for that and that's what this plan does. Um, as well as we had, we were down one well with Roaring Fork, so. Except for a hard year. Um, wastewater, we have the one resiliency step, we already talked about it. Energy efficient and then getting ready for nutrients, nutrient changes, um and then just general aging infrastructure. Uh, wastewater treatment plant was built in the seventies, so we've kind of talked about that. Um, I think most of you have seen the plant. It's not the prettiest place. Um, and then the big thing here is Kevin was really already uh mentioning is. We're on a great path, meters, master plan, data, rate study. Incentivize water conservation, figure out how to fund our operations, that's it. So I think. We're, we're, we're on a glide path, we just have to execute. I shouldn't say, any questions on that, on the goals? Okay, last slide. See, we're getting close, it's almost nine. Um, we did crunch some numbers. I want to reiterate, these are rough. Um, purposefully obfuscated uh the comparison against up valley and down valley communities because. Everyone calculates the way they do rate uh rate fees. Um, it throughout the valley and. I wanted to just give the, a rough understanding of where we sit in that aspect or in that general um use. This is just for residential, um so I don't wanna, you know, compare against commercial and other uh uses. Um, other communities use tap size or EQRs to determine base rates. Uh, we do not, we have just our base rate and then tiered structures. And we wanted to gather the temperature of you all on a ten percent rate increase for this year. Um, not sure what future years will look like, but likely start looking at that projection. Um, until we get that rate study done and then get it cleaned up to where we think we need it to be.
And and this is a function, if you remember back to the slide. That projected operating expenses and the downward trend in our reserve. Um. I know it seems large, but I. I don't think we want to be the community that doubles their rates. I think we need to stay ahead of this a little bit, you know. We've hammered on it, personnel, seventy seven percent, construction, a hundred percent. And our thirty five percent increase has not kept pace with those. And, and this isn't some magic bullet fix, but I think this helps us. By the time we need to get to the rate study. And not have it be a huge shock.
And that thing would suggest we would still be below almost everybody in our rate. After a ten percent increase.
That was a surprise to me, so. That was my takeaway as well.
Yeah, and, and again, these are rough numbers. But I think if you look at it. In the, e- even maybe just within the context of the change for our customers. You know. Eighty four bucks a year for two. What was it, two hundred and fifty two bucks a year?
It's nine o'clock at night, I can't do that.
Yeah, so that, that's kind of the range we're talking about for our residential customers depending on their water usage. And. I, I'm. The other important thing is this helps us. Maintain that reserve for some of the bigger projects that are coming down the road. Instead of artificially heating that up in a feel good moment. I think it would be smarter to at least consider this. We're not asking you to approve this tonight, like Scott said, it's more. Taking the temperature of the board because we didn't want to spring this on you when we showed you appendix A later on this year.
No, I think it's good to pause there and see, I mean, I, I support this. I think we've been conservative, but also proactive over time. Based on the best information we have at the moment and I really love the way that we phased in that last approach over five years. So that we didn't do the big shock, oh my god, we're gonna double rates or anything like that. And I think this is just another case of that. I don't think ten dollars on those monthly rates is that big of a hit and. Um, I mean, sorry, ten percent on those monthly rates is that big of a hit and we've seen everything else go up in our lives and this just has to follow, so I support it.
I mean, this is just the reality of running the system and it's the most important thing we do.
Yeah.
I mean, if we don't have, take care of our waste and provide people with water, there's no town.
There's no tactical urbanism.
There's, there's nothing, so I, I really appreciate all the work, all the background. This is very thorough and I'm, I'm, I'm very supportive. And uh, I mean, if in your, if you get to a point where you're running some of these numbers and you go, ah, it needs to be a little bit higher. It's the reality, I mean, the cost of everything of, has gone up. And there's not much we can do about it, and yet this is really important. So I'm, I'm for whatever you guys think we should do, um. We, we need to upgrade our system. It's, it's seeing a lot of wear and use, so. Thanks for bringing this to us.
I think, I think we'll get there and I, I really do think this, this approach. Getting to that rate study that's using that granular data we can get out of the metering plus. The results of the master plan. Will be that ultimate goal, but I think this is a good step.
Anybody have concerns about if we see a ten percent rate increase? And Erica, you had a question?
I had a question. On the, I'm just curious, do other communities charge, have tiered rates based on home size too? Or is that?
It's, it would be based off of either tap size or EQRs.
Okay.
They have different base rates and then different tiered structures.
Okay.
EQRs is equivalent residence?
Equivalent residential unit.
Okay.
Yeah. That, they're called all different kinds of things, but it's basically.
The people are taking a crap.
So a large home. The large home that uses a lot of water might be paying a higher rate, but we don't differentiate by.
We don't.
Home size, okay. But that might be something that we, um, that might be. Part of our master plan is kind of looking at our rate study is like, should we be doing?
I think we can look at all different options.
Okay, yeah.
And we'll be able to have data that can support it. Um, I have some ideas, I don't wanna get into deeply now, but um, you know, hoping to. Use that data to really develop a, a nice progressive tiered structure that incentivizes water conservation. I think that's really where, I think you probably wanna go and where I wanna go.
Yeah, I, I would say just briefly and I, I don't, Ben won't let us get into the weeds on this, but. What we're trying to develop with that data is actually. Charging for the water that people use and how they use it. These other. Tap sizes and EQRs are more charging you like on how much could you use versus. How much do you use? And I think that do you use is a better philosophy.
Okay, anything else you wanted to present us with? I think you said that was your last slide. Well, thank you for an incredibly thorough and also very efficient, I think, and concise. Um, presentation of really complex information and it sounds like you have the board's full support with all the plans that you proposed. And the capital investments you proposed as well as the rate increase.
Thank you.
All right, thank you. Ryan?
If, if I could take thirty seconds, just because it came up a couple of times tonight on building services, obviously critical for the community. And the patience that everybody's had, um, I know, you know, we've kind of been sharing in different forums like at the Chamber Confluence that. Uh, there's light at the end of the tunnel. We did have three interviews yesterday for the plans examiner. And so we're, we're getting closer. I just want folks to know that, uh, there is a light at the end of the tunnel. And so the time for review, which has been very long and um some of the other things associated there, we see some improvement. Including, I think, when staff have been overloaded, um, that stress. Um, challenges some of the partnership feel that can be out there when we're working on uh permitting processes and then also looking internally. At some of the ways that we can be more efficient, which is hard to do when you feel buried. So. Um, just wanted to put a quick update in there because we talked about that in a couple of spaces tonight, that we are working on that and. Um, we've appreciated everybody's patience and there's some light at the end of the tunnel. That's it.
Great, thank you. We don't have a meeting next week because it's the last, it's the fifth week and then we don't have a waiting the next, meeting the next week is its first week. So see you in three weeks. Um, it's October, it's like fourteenth or seventeenth or something like that. Fourteen?
See you at Potato Day then, first thing.
Yeah.